Good evening. As Vice Chairperson of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the May 20th, 2025 regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school system and thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Now, this will be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches. La vicepresidenta de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 20 de mayo 2025. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la superintendente se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertos al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you. Now, we will move on to public comment. Mr. Mills?
We, as Board, in collaboration with the superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. One moment, please.
My apologies. There is an announcement that the superintendent would like to make.
I actually want to take a moment. You know, we celebrate at the beginning of our Board meetings the greatness that exists in our schools. And so tonight, we have several student recognitions. One is that we are celebrating our accomplished, our very accomplished multilingual learners, especially our outstanding trilingual students. So the seal of biliteracy is for students who demonstrate proficiency in two or more languages, especially at this time when they're graduating high school. And so to earn this seal, students must complete all English language arts requirements for graduation and take a standardized test to prove their proficiency in another language. The award helps ensure that our students, when they move over to post-secondary enrollment, that they're placed in appropriate language courses at the college level. And also, it helps our students earn college credit. It also serves as evidence of increasingly important language and cultural skills, obviously, for future employers. And it allows us here an opportunity to celebrate the diversity that exists in Hartford Public Schools. And so we have more than 80 languages that are spoken across all of our schools. And while, right, some districts might see this as a challenge, in Hartford Public Schools, we see this as an opportunity. We encourage all of our students to expand their world language skills, learn about various cultures, and understand why it is important to embrace these very different ways of life. And so over 200 of our seal of biliteracy students, biliteracy students are going to be honored tomorrow night at Weaver. However, we wanted to take this opportunity tonight to give a special acknowledgement to the trilingual learners. They have demonstrated an exceptional aptitude for mastering languages that will serve them well in the classroom and the workforce and in life. And so I don't know that, I don't think that they're here tonight. However, I will, I will name who they are. So Remison Barbosa, Languages Portuguese and Spanish from Buckley High School; Valeria Busigoli, Spanish and Italian University High; Jean Cadet, Haitian Creole, French at Weaver; Samuel Vinicus Xavier Gomez from Portuguese-Spanish at Hartford Public High School; Alexandra Dos Santos Lucas, Portuguese-Spanish University High; Nozem Banu, Marivjova, Uzek, and Russian at Sports Medical Sciences Academy; Samira Pinero Ferreira Costa, Portuguese and Spanish at Hartford Public High School; and Felipe Saraiwa Alves, Portuguese-Spanish Buckley High School. Please join me in celebrating our students. None of this happens in isolation. And so gratitude to our staff members who supported our talented students, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Torres Hill, our Director of Services for Multilingual Learners, Joanna Robles, World Language Curriculum Specialist, Ms. Snyder, and all of our world language teachers and counselors who play an important role for our students to be at their best. And Board Member Ledger, I do have another award recognition. We are also very proud to recognize this year's recipient of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Student Leadership Award. These students are nominated to receive this award by their school principal. Students nominated exhibit the following leadership skills: willingness to take on challenges, capability to make difficult decisions, concern for and the ability to work with others, willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, ability to understand issues clearly, and the ability to honor a commitment. So we have several of our outstanding school leaders here today. Principal Bethany Sullivan, Classical Magnet, has nominated, has nominated Irina Vasilkiv and Freddie Picardo. Principal Ken O'Brien from Kinsella Magnet has nominated Kim Yat-Johnson and Avery Charlamanga. And Principal Edward Gustafson, Gus Jacobson at Noah Webster has nominated Jalissa Gay and Elizabeth Becker. Congratulations. We are so very proud of all of you. And again, none of this happens in isolation. Thank you to our outstanding administrators, educators, and to our families for also being partners in the work.
And now for a public comment. Mr. Mills?
We're good, Superintendent? Excellent. Okay, let's try this again. We, as a Board, in collaboration with the superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously. And to that end, staff will follow up within 48 hours if follow-up is required via the preferred method of contact the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being, adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, this will be read in Spanish by Christina.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Al persona, el personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las 48 horas si fuera necesario a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguimos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento, adhiriéndonos a los protocolos de seguridad. Esa persona investigará su caso y se, y se comunicará con usted dentro de las 48 horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará, dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Our first speaker tonight is Hernan LaFontaine.
My apologies. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hernan LaFontaine. And I, I have a lot to say. I know I'm going to respect the time limit, so I'll condense and I'll read. But I have to tell you, before anything else, I am thrilled to be here tonight for no other reason than I have tons of memories about being where you are and doing the things that you're doing. And I just have to let you know that in spite of my emotional status at this very moment, I can't overlook the fact that you all deserve incredible gratitude from the public at large, from the community, from the parents, the students, for the work you do. Because those young children that received awards today did that because you created a system that allowed them to progress, to learn, and to become future citizens, productive citizens of our community. So again, I'm going to give you my thanks, my appreciation for the work you do every day. Un millón de gracias por todo lo que hacen, porque para mí es una maravilla cuando ustedes ofrecen su tiempo, su energía para poder ayudar a nuestra juventud. I just want to make sure that we understand that some of those awards were more valuable than everybody realized. May I please just quickly try to get through whatever I jotted here? And again, the key point here is that you, all of you, remind me of my first year in Hartford in 1979, when I came as a superintendent. And those were so vital days because we had just gone through a decade of really serious social upheaval in the United States of America. And we were just beginning to calm, but there was a lot of things that had to be straightened out in all of our society and particularly in our schools. And the Board had to get to that, and I had to do the best to give them that kind of support. So, I mean, I still remember Maria Sanchez, Kurt Clemens, Sue Ginsberg, Wayne Casey. I could go on with the names like that because they were so much a part of my everyday life and have been, not to mention the other 150 members of Board of Education in my education career, both in New York City and over here. So I just want to say quickly that in those early days, I'm going to read this. I had the privilege of becoming member of the National Urban Superintendents Network. And it was newly established by Secretary Bell of the United States Department of Education. And it actually was a moment when he wanted urban educators to identify issues that were important for the United States Department of Education to focus on and for improvement in study and research. And so we went and we listened to one of our early lectures with Mortimer Adler, a very famous educational philosopher, internationally recognized, and so on, who gave us a talk, a seminar, on, guess what? The PIDEA proposal. And the PIDEA proposal was the basic, underlying philosophical and actually educational, pedagogical basis for the Classical Magnet program. It was exciting. I can't go into all of the detail because of the limited time. But I want to tell you, I came back completely invigorated and motivated to say, we've got to do something now, not sometime in the future. And we've got to really focus on how we can take care of all of our students. That, by the way, was another major focus in the nation as we talked more and more about equal educational opportunity and various kinds of other ways of serving the entire community of us. So we got involved, and I started talking to our staff, all of my cabinet people. And I can give you the names as well, too. I just want to just move on. But one of the key persons at the end was that I spoke to the principal of Quirk Middle School, Amado Cruz, and I told him that, you know, this is what I was thinking. And he, along with everybody else, said, hmm, that's a tall order. And by the way, we also already had an honors program. And so one of the first challenges was to try to distinguish and add to that we wanted something that was not simply the honors program. Of course, it's incredibly valuable. But we wanted something that applied to the entire school population. And that this kind of approach, the PIDEA program, which envisioned a curriculum that had some rigorous subject matter, but also with the concept, the key concept inside, that every student can learn, not just those elite who had the high academic, but every single student can learn something because they are going to be citizens of the world. And for them to do that job properly, they need to know their numbers, their letters, et cetera, how to calculate and so on, and how to use those things in the process of solving problems, which is a key factor there. And then, not only solve problems, but contribute to the community they live in and to the world and the society that we live in. And so it's a way, way bigger agenda, and it applies to all the students. And I came back so excited and that we pushed and we pushed and we were able to get things started. At Quirk, we moved it on to Hartford Public High School. We moved it again. As things went on, more people got involved, and parents and students and administrators, teachers, you name it, all pitched in. I can't give you all the names, but there were dozens and dozens of people who said, this is something that is worth our total and undivided effort, and we're going to do that. And today, because of that effort, because of that commitment by all of these people, we have a Classical Magnet School just a few blocks away on, right on Asylum and Woodland. And I'm proud to be a neighbor, but I'm even prouder to remember that I planted a seed in the minds of our staff and the minds of our community that we could actually do an incredible job for all of our children. And that seed was nourished and taken care of by dozens of people, community, parents, professionals, non-professionals, all of whom were committed to doing one thing, and that's to support our youth in their development for the sake of the, not only their own individual sake, but for the sake of their community and society. So I say to myself, I've done what I can, and I appreciate what all of these other folks did. And I really would consider it a tremendous, tremendous honor for me to have my name associated with the Classical Magnet School. So I leave it in your hands. And if there's, of course, any questions anybody wants, by all means, please let me know, right now or at any time. And I wouldn't mind having a private conversation with any and all of you about the experiences that I had, some of which were very funny and some were not so funny. And sometimes, once in a rare moment, I get a chance to share things with Superintendent Torres Rodriguez, and she sometimes doesn't believe the things I tell her. But the fact is that it's been a marvelous experience. And one way or the other, I have never moved away from Hartford because I came for a job and I loved it. And this is now my 46th year in Hartford, and I'm not going anywhere. So thank you very much.
Ivy Doyle?
Superintendent, Board, my name is Ivy Doyle. Last September, I wrote a letter to you in support of the naming of a school for Hernan LaFontaine. Important to say, I am not a teacher. I'm not an administrator. I am certainly not a politician. I'm a Hartford resident, and I'm a neighbor of Hernan and his wife Evelyn LaFontaine. When my husband and I moved back to the Hartford area some 15 years ago, I was quick to befriend Hernan. We started telling each other our stories. The first one was, dear to our hearts, about New York. And I call it New York, where somebody comes from somewhere. In my case, my parents, my family was from Poland. For Hernan, it was Puerto Rico. We shared our stories. Perhaps the one that is most lasting, the one we talked about the most, was education. Fortunate was I to have it in my DNA, as I believe Hernan does, and that at our dinner table, my mother was a special educations teacher, my father a coach, an instructor at Central Connecticut, now university. When it came time to talk about Hernan's accomplishments, I need to go to my letter that I wrote to you and read a brief excerpt. "The more I understood Hernan's accomplishments, the more there was to assimilate. I came to appreciate his were far-reaching, innovative firsts, having the impact to change and shape lives. His catalog of irrefutable achievements was developed over decades, driven by focus and by passion. But that was then. And here we now have Hernan, whom I know much better. Being long retired from his Hartford commitments hasn't met disengaging. Hernan's devotion to our neighborhood, to our community, means there's always something for him to speak about or for him to discuss. He is, as you saw, not shy, and he's committed. With his fervor for improvement, there's always more for him to master. And with his empathy, there's always something to teach." I really hope that this story, this part of this story, which is of service, will continue and that you'll give consideration to the possibility of adding his name to the Classical Magnet. It would be a great honor. And I think one day, I would like to believe that a student would look up at the wall or a teacher would give an assignment and say, Hernan LaFontaine, who is that? And they would look. They would read the Vida. They would read his accomplishments. And that I do believe they would be wowed. Thank you for your time. You do hard work. You do good work. I appreciate it.
Evelyn LaFontaine, followed by Sharon Skoll.
Are you getting used to seeing my face? Good evening, members of the Board of Education and Superintendent Torres Rodriguez. My name is Evelyn Coloma LaFontaine. I want to thank you for considering our proposal to add Hernan LaFontaine's name to the Classical Magnet School. You've already received extensive biographical information about him. So this evening, I will only highlight some of his achievements. By the way, just for the interest of full disclosure and for people that don't know me, I am, Hernan is my husband. First, I would like to inform you that we had a very good meeting at the Classical Magnet School. School with the principal Bethany Sullivan and the school governance council chairperson Maritza Troche and other members. The meeting provided an excellent opportunity for discussion on a variety of questions and concerns. There were genuine interest and interliners to review these concerns with common sense and goodwill. We thank Ms. Sullivan and Ms. Troche for their gracious hospitality in hosting the meeting. Now, let me speak a little bit about my husband and the former superintendent. Hernan LaFontaine, whose parents came from Puerto Rico in the 1920s, was born and raised in Spanish Harlem in Manhattan, popularly called El Barrio. All his education was in the New York City public schools, including his studies at City College of New York, where he earned his BS and MA degrees. Hernan began his career as a teacher of science at junior high school in the South Bronx. He continued as a high school biology teacher and later as principal of the Arthur Schoenberg Intermediate School in Harlem. A significant highlight of his career was his selection as principal to lead the establishment of the first bilingual school, PS 25, in New York City and in the entire Northeast region of the country. His success is widely recognized, and he was led to become the assistant superintendent heading the new created Office of Bilingual Education at the Central Office of Education. He was in charge of the program that included 75,000 pupils, the ESL and bilingual program. His advocacy for equal educational opportunity and multilingual and multicultural programs motivated him to establish numerous groups, such as the Puerto Rican Educators Association, the National and New York State Association for Bilingual Education. In 79, 1979, Hernan LaFontaine was named superintendent of the Hartford Public Schools. He was the first school superintendent of Puerto Rican heritage in the city of Hartford, the state of Connecticut, and in the continental United States. During his 12-year tenure, Superintendent LaFontaine led major accomplishments in raising student achievement and improving educational programs in the district. You have received that information in the documentation we have given you. In the early 1980s, Hernan attended a conference in Washington, DC, featuring the internationally recognized educator Mortimer Adler, who presented a seminar on the PIDEA Classical Program. He has explained a little bit about that program. He came back to the district very motivated and wanted to implement that program. Because of time, I just want to say that throughout his career, Hernan has been a leader, an innovator, and trailblazer. Hernan represented a highly visible role model for young Hispanics and other minority students. Nevertheless, he often emphasizes that his professional and moral obligation was to improve the educational system for the benefit of all youngsters, regardless of ethnicity, race, or economic background. In recognition of Hernan LaFontaine's lifelong dedication and impactful leadership in education and civic engagement at the national, state, and city levels, particularly his profound contributions to the students in Hartford, we believe the honor of adding his name to the Classical Magnet School is richly deserved. The tribute would acknowledge his unwavering commitment and advocacy for the educational advancement and well-being of Hartford students and community. We urge you to consider our recommendation and approve this request. Thank you so much, and thank you so much for the work that you do.
Sharon Skoll, followed by Constance Green.
Good evening, Board of Education members and superintendent. I'm Sharon Skoll. I am a retired Hartford Public School teacher. I taught in this system for 35 years as an elementary teacher and reading consultant. During those years, I worked for many superintendents. One after another left after a short time for one reason or another. It was difficult constantly having new goals for the system, only to have them interrupted when that person left. When Hernan LaFontaine became the Hartford School Superintendent, I had hopes that he would remain in the system. Right away, I could see that he had a vision for the school system and was dedicated and passionate to see his vision through. How fortunate that he led the system for 12 years, a record for sure. I was a reading consultant during his tenure. Hernan LaFontaine was approachable, listened, had goals and plans for the system. The teachers truly liked and respected him. He was a true leader. He implemented many excellent programs and was the founder of the Classical Magnet Program at Quirk Middle School. It continues today as the Classical Magnet School and is known as an outstanding magnet school. Mr. LaFontaine often visited schools and related extremely well to the students and staff. I attended many Hartford School Board meetings, and he listened attentively to all who spoke. I am most fortunate that my husband and I moved into the Goodwin Estate community in the West End of Hartford at the same time 20 years ago, as did the LaFontaines'. It was a new condo community which was almost adjacent to the Classical Magnet School. Hernan LaFontaine continued to be extremely active for the city of Hartford, but also for our community. He had many ideas for projects, social issues, and how we could all support one another. He has always displayed the energy of a young man. How fortunate to have someone like Hernan LaFontaine working and living in the city of Hartford. He has given so much to the community. Naming the Classical Magnet School in his honor would be very appropriate, considering his long and valuable service to the Hartford Public School System and the city of Hartford. It has been my privilege to have known Hernan LaFontaine both professionally and personally.
Constance Green, followed by Edwin Vargas.
Good evening. My name is Constance Melton Green. I'm a former lawyer and educator in Connecticut, and I'm a resident of Hartford. I had the pleasure of working with Dr. LaFontaine during his tenure as superintendent of the schools for the Hartford Public Schools while I was a consultant at the Connecticut Department of Education. This has led to a lifelong friendship that extends well after his tenure at the Hartford Schools until the present day. I've known Hernan as an advocate for education throughout his career. It is therefore fitting to acknowledge and honor him as the first school superintendent of Puerto Rican heritage in the city of Hartford, the state of Connecticut, and the United States with the school naming of the Classical Magnet School. He has been a Hartford presence for more than four decades. Four things I'd like to point out very quickly about Dr. LaFontaine. Intellect. Hernan is a learned man who sets an amazing example for students and colleagues. In 2002, he was one of the participants in my doctoral research at Teachers College, Columbia University, on Chef Fionnail. Hernan was always available with insights that assisted in making my dissertation memorable. So, I have a personal point of this. I received my doctorate in 2003 from Columbia. His empathy. Hernan sincerely cares for his community and the people of this community. He has always been willing to lend a helping hand to a neighbor and to be a role model for community building. Commitment. Hernan served on the Hartford City Council and was elected as city council president after serving as the Hartford School Superintendent. His continued commitment to improving education and the quality of life for Hartford residents remains steadfast. It has been a lifetime of service as educator and community builder. And then lastly, family. Hernan is committed to his family, his wife Evelyn, his children, and his grandchildren. His love for family extends to numerous friendships among colleagues throughout the country. In conclusion, a naming, a school naming, becomes a wonderful opportunity for the Hartford Board of Education and the city of Hartford to acknowledge one of their own, one of our own, a longtime resident, a longtime educator, a longtime model of integrity and good works. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Edwin Vargas. I reside in 141 Douglas Street, Hartford. I've been a city resident since 1972, and I started as a Hartford school teacher and worked 35 years. My wife was also, Sylvia was also a school teacher. We both did 35 years in the Hartford Schools, retired in 2007, and very proud to be Hartford residents during the whole time. Our kids went through the Hartford Public Schools, and we continue to be very active in the community. And I am here tonight to, first of all, thank you for your service as board members and for all the help you've given us in moving this process forward for what we hope will soon be the LaFontaine Magnet, Classical Magnet School. Has a good ring to it, LaFontaine Classical Magnet School. We're hoping that that will happen soon. I've spoken to many people in the community who are looking forward to the actual night where the board votes on this issue so that they can express your support through their presence, their physical presence here. I think it's so wonderful, you've heard all the speakers before me say why this gentleman is so deserving of this honor, and, you know, I wanted to make sure I added my voice here tonight to make sure that, you know, you know that the board knows that this is something that the community supports and that it's, as Evelyn said, we met with the people at the community, at the school community, with the principal, the staff, the parents, and it was a wonderful meeting, and we're all looking forward to this. And before I cede the microphone, I just wanted, on an unrelated subject, say that I truly support Mike Fathergill. I think it would be wonderful if he was able to march through the state after so many years and receive his high school diploma, which has been postponed for so long, but finally still with us, and we have an opportunity to right a wrong. So, thank you for your time and attention.
Calixto Torres, followed by Bill Katz.
Good evening, Board members, superintendent. I come here today to speak in support of naming or adding the name of Hernan LaFontaine to the Classical Magnet School. Like Edwin, I was a teacher here in Hartford. In fact, we came the same year. Started out as the language specialist at the Anne Street Bilingual School, the first bilingual school in the city of Hartford. Transitioned to become a team leader at Park Middle School, and after that, I became the director of the North Hartford Adult Learning Center, which was also known as Cami Nemos. So, I've known Hernan for almost half a century. Doesn't seem like it, but it has been. I've had the pleasure of having worked under the administration that Hernan led during the time that I was in the school system. And then, years later, I also had the pleasure of serving with him alongside him on the Hartford City Council as a council member and as a council president. Hernan has devoted many, many years to the city of Hartford, but especially his commitment to the students, our kids, attending a good school system. Hernan is a national-known educator, an advocate for good quality education, which I believe was what compelled him when he came into Hartford and decided that all of our children deserve the best possible education, and that every child should have an opportunity, if they so wished, to be in a classical education program. And it was through these efforts that these programs actually became a reality in the city of Hartford. And subsequently, now we have a great school, Classical Magnet School, which embodies those ideas and in those efforts. So, today, I'm here again to ask you to consider adding the name of Hernan LaFontaine to the Classical Magnet School. Hernan is much more than just an administrator. He lives education, he has lived education all his life, and he has made Hartford his home, and has committed so many years to making Hartford a better place for everyone, but especially for our schoolchildren. And by the way, we served on the city council, and he always advocated for a strong Board of Education budget.
Bill Katz, followed by Anne Gashdegian.
Good evening. I'm here in support of Mike Fathergill's receiving his diploma after, I guess, 57 years being expelled from Hartford High. And he was expelled for walking out with a group of students after the tragic assassination of Martin Luther King, one of the most tragic things that happened in the 20th century. And it's confounding and amazing that he would be deprived of that diploma. What struck me upon reading this story was that one year before this occurred, in 1967, I too was expelled. I was a student at St. Joseph Cathedral School, and two weeks before summer vacation, it was demanded of me to get a haircut, and I refused to cut my hair, and I was summarily expelled. And you can see that, you know, that did a lot of good. It didn't grow. But I really do hope that this wrong is righted, and I would be proud to have my business frame his document when it's issued by the Board of Education.
Anne Gashdegian, followed by Walt Kenya.
Good evening to the superintendent, the board. I see some familiar faces, and I also see some new board members, some young blood, and people that I'm hoping will have very open minds about what I'm going to say tonight. As I, you can see, I'm wearing my Hartford High 1968 t-shirt. I graduated that year, the same year as Mike Fathergill. 1968 was a tumultuous year. People in my generation, in that age group, we call ourselves the assassination generation. When we were in eighth grade, John F. Kennedy was killed. When we were freshmen in high school, Malcolm X was killed. And when we were seniors in high school, we had the death of Martin Luther King, and then, two months later, Robert Kennedy. So, it was troubling times. When Dr. King was killed on April 4th, 1968, the next day, when we returned to school, we found people were grieving. we found people were grieving, grieving very, very much. We also knew and had heard that Weaver High School and Buckley High School, the only other two public high schools in the city, had dismissed their students early that day when they returned to school. At Hartford High, they had not dismissed by after lunchtime. So, Mike and several hundred others staged a peaceful walkout of the school. They walked down Forest Street to Farmington Avenue. They went into St. Joseph's Cathedral for a few minutes to pray. They then walked downtown with police escort, so they would not be hurt walking in the middle of the street, and they went to City Hall, where then-mayor, Ann Ucello, came out, and she sat on the steps with these children, young people who were showing their grief, how they felt. The next day was a weekend, no, I'm sorry, the next day, when Mike returned to school, he was told that he is immediately being expelled, expelled, two months and one and a half credits shy of graduating. He was not allowed to clean out his locker. He was told to leave the school immediately. He went home, it was the weekend then, and he thought, well, we're probably going to get, you know, in-school suspension or something when we go back there. Instead, a letter came to his home telling Mike that he, and he had to bring a parent with him and appear at the Board of Education. He went there with his mother, and he was told, it was reiterated, that he was expelled from school. No reason was given, no reason, no questions were asked. He is expelled. He cannot finish his coursework to graduate. He is not allowed to go to any other Hartford public school to finish his coursework, nor could he attend night school to finish his coursework. He was expelled. And on his record card, for some reason, the Board of Education listed him as having voluntarily dropped out, which he did not do. Mike had a dream. He wanted to study sociology. He wanted to go to college. Back in 1968, without a high school diploma, you were going to have a very hard time trying to get into any sort of college. So, Mike didn't just disappear and go away. For 65 years, and I believe you have copies of his resume on the agenda, Mike has done amazing work in the city of Hartford, particularly with young people. If you haven't seen that resume yet, please click on it and read it. It's eight pages long, beginning in 1960, the work he was doing within the community when he was just a kid in middle school. So, I saw that you have it on the agenda. I'm very happy that you are considering to give Mike an honorary diploma. But like many others, not just me, we believe that Mike Fathergill should be allowed and honored to walk on the stage at this year's Hartford Public High School graduation 57, from 57 years ago, when he should have been on that stage. But for some reason, he was singled out as someone who could not do that. I know the honorary diploma is a good thing. I just hope you're not going to stick it in an envelope and mail it to him. I think it would mean something to the people of Hartford, to the Hartford public school system, to the students and their families who are at that graduation when this man is announced at the age of 77, finally being able to receive his diploma. I would very much like to see that happen. I know Mike would too, and you are going to hear from him also. So, please, take it under consideration, see the work this man has done, and hear what he has to say. Thank you so much.
Walt Kenya, followed by Mike Fathergill.
Evening, everybody, those in attendance, and to the millions watching at home. Come here tonight to give support to awarding Mike Fathergill his honorary diploma. It only has half my support, and I'll explain why, because this is only half justice, and you're only meeting Mike Fathergill halfway. An honorary diploma is not recognizing that the work he did academically, but is basically recognizing what he has done for the public, which is awesome and great, okay? But it's not a full diploma. So, when the district and board throw around the term restorative justice, they should tread easy with that, because this is not restorative justice at all. And it's a no-brainer to vote against this. It'd be pathetic to vote against this. I find it curious that you're allowing people to discuss and debate awarding this honorary diploma to Mike Fathergill, which is a no-brainer, yet, on your consent agenda, you're awarding and spending district money without public debate or public discussion. But something that shouldn't be debated is being open for discussion. It doesn't make any sense. The bigger question about this diploma is, will you allow him to march? At least one board member spoke last year and stated that she was against it, that she said it would steal the limelight from those graduating. Are there any graduating seniors in the public tonight? Damn. I think if you ask the graduating seniors, I think they would have no problem of Mr. Fathergill marching across the stage with him. If you don't allow him to march, there's no sincerity in your awarding honorary, honorary diploma, and there's no sincerity to justice. The district, and you're, tonight, you're also voting on graduation policy. If you open up to that policy, the district has multiple ways that students can earn Special circumstances and allowable flexibilities for earning credits towards graduation, and it lists several ways. And such, it says, "Such circumstances might include, but are not limited to, blah, 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 blah." All right? I think being expelled with one and a half credit left in your career should have been a special circumstance. Flexibilities, you list different flexibilities and circumstances that you award credits under. And at the end of that section, section 6146, parentheses E, it states that "These flexibilities, not named above, may be considered in order to meet minimum graduation requirements and must be supported by the superintendent. The superintendent can okay other flexibilities for a student to earn credits." Mr. Fathergill has been told that it's the state requirements that have been holding him back from getting his original diploma, and based on this policy, that is not true. Any superintendent in any Board of Education since 1968 could have awarded this man a diploma, and they haven't done so. And as far as graduating and the superintendent okaying flexibilities, it has been done, has been done. Mr. Fathergill, can you read? Of course you can read. Mr. Fathergill, can you write? Of course you can write. At least one lawsuit states that Hartford Public Schools has been graduating people without them being able to learn to read or write. The 119K Commission did its state tour, and that found that the higher percentage, Hartford had the highest percentage of any city or town in Connecticut of disengaged and unconnected students. And that is because of the education they received was not up to snuff. According to the police chief, who spoke at a community meeting last year, when somebody asked him about recruiting local students, he said a lot of the Hartford graduates are unable to get through the entrance process to become policemen in Hartford. The graduation rates last year claimed to be the highest in 10 years. Last year's graduating class began their high school career at the start of COVID. We were told there was great COVID learning loss, slow recovery. Then all of a sudden, they became seniors, and more of them graduated than the other, any other class in the last 10 years. How is that possible? Is the state, did the state sign off on each one of those? What do they know? What kind of data do they have on each student? That's all I have to say. This man deserves an actual diploma, an honorary diploma, is meeting him halfway, but he shouldn't march. If he's not allowed to march, that just denigrates the meaning of the honorary diploma itself. I also like to say that the board should come out into the sunlight, like the light here. Thanks, Dan. I think that any future superintendent candidates ought to be presented to the public. And no contracts by consent agenda. Let the public discuss them and give their views on them. And according to your climate survey in this document, only 12% of families filled out the surveys. Families, you have to get involved.
Excuse me, my apologies, I'm sorry, but you're over your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. This has been a long road, you know. I'd like to start with the beginning. I grew up in a housing project here in Hartford, one of the eight projects, and most of the kids coming from those projects didn't have much expectation as to going on and creating great things. You know, I looked at my community as I grew, and I saw the missing pieces that had to do with the educational system not feeding back into our community, which would allow it to grow. Attending Hartford High was one of the greatest things, because actually, I wasn't sure I was going to make it myself, but I stuck with it. I made a promise to my mother that I would graduate, and by no fault of my own, I wasn't able to. I got to the point of my last year in high school, and working my community for at least 12 years up to that point, wanting to come out and to continue that process, and promising my mother that I would graduate was the only thing that was on my mind. Nothing that I did stopped me from graduating. You heard the story of Martin Luther King assassination. The next day, we showed up at school from all different directions. Nobody met, we were young, there was none of that. We were a spread-out community. We showed up in school with the anticipation that they would see where we were and how we felt as young people growing up and coming into this city and looking for the city to respect what was going on in our lives. And that was Martin Luther King straightening out a lot of things, opening up a lot of doors, allowing us to go to a lot of places. The day after he died, we showed up in school with hopes that they would, like they did when Kennedy died in 63, allowed us to go home and grieve. Noontime came like it was mentioned, nobody mentioned anything. Some of the students in the class were talking about leaving. If they didn't, 1:00 came, they left. I left out of the back door, actually, in one of my classes, still in the class. We left out the back door. I was not an orchestrator of a organized process, which just was something that came about that day. When the, everything went down, Monday came, we came to school, there were the vice principals standing with papers in their hands, and they isolated certain people and extracted us to the office. Over 250 students left, along with various ethnic groups at that time. We were isolated and told that we'd be receiving a letter from the Board of Education in two weeks, and it happened. Me and my mother walked from Bellevue Square to the Board of Education. We sat there. We got in that room 15 minutes, with a panel there. They told us, point blank, you're expelled from the Hartford public school system, you can't attend any Hartford high school, any high schools in Hartford, and even not night school. They put me on a blacklist. First of all, if over 250 people walk out, how can you isolate a few kids and say that they're to blame for it, when it wasn't a blameful kind of a situation? It should have been more heartfelt, it should have been more consideration of the mental status. Now you have counselors in school dealing with the mental ability of students when somebody dies, or a relative, or a teacher or something passes away, to assist them. There was no passion and no compassion at all. They suspended just a group of us. Why were we isolated, and what was we charged with? After the whole melee was over, we were just left with nothing, no reprieve, no way of challenging it. The Board of Education stood alone. You are not to blame for the kind of things that happened from some of the people in the past. What we felt after it was over, that some of this list had to do with the principals and vice principals allowing themselves this opportunity to eliminate some of the students that they had problems with. Understand me, you're sitting here providing an education in a direction for a city of kids and protecting them. Why are you taking vengeance out on some of the ones you personally don't like? So, my position right now is twofold. I really appreciate you honoring me with this honorary diploma. Not so much that it is a great thing to me, but it is more respectful that you see the passion and the dedication I've had to my people in my community to continue my work. Getting this diploma is something that I, to me, you know, I felt so bad when me and my mother walked home. She never spoke to me. By the time we got home, she still said nothing. I know she was ashamed of me. I promised her that I was going to graduate. I did nothing too. Nobody has given us answers from that time to this time. If there were charges, then I should have ended up in a court case. If there were violations of things that I did and the other students did, then why wasn't everybody charged with it? You know, there's just too many questions. I need you to help me come up with some of these answers, not just for myself, but for the people between then and now that may have been wronged in ways and their lives changed. I'm pretty sure you have enough compassion and feeling to understand what I'm saying, that some of this should be looked in. I really would like to have you look into this issue and let's continue it. I really appreciate you honoring me with this honorary diploma, which tells me I have some value of what I've been doing in my life. I am the father of 20 kids. I have 41 grandkids and eight grand, great-grand. There's nothing I know that you're concerned about, but I've raised them in this city. I watched every one of my brothers and sisters walk across that stage, and was there. I don't know the only one that didn't, and I don't know why I was isolated and treated that way. If you can, I thank you for the honorary diploma, but please, help me look into this issue. Thank you.
Mike Susie, followed by Bella Promenech. Mike Susie, followed by Bella Prominek.
Well, I can't promise to follow up that. I do want to recognize the gentleman before me in saying, you know, I remember hearing about your story last year. I've seen these people who spoke out on your behalf and I'm happy to hear that, one, you're getting your diploma and two, that, you know, the work that you did not let that, that it didn't really change the person that you were after, after school and that you've helped the community despite that moment. I'm also happy to be here again and not in front of the city, city council where they mispronounced my name. So, because I went to the budget hearing to echo the same concerns that I've echoed to you. And they go, okay, Mike Saucy? And so now when I hear Mike Susie, I'm like, yes, Christina got it. So this, being displaced has really hurt for a second year in a row. I've let you guys know that and I let city council hear that. To the point when I got back to my seat, I was wearing a red shirt and people had told me that I was as red, my face was as red as my shirt. And hopefully, I'm wearing blue, I don't head back to my seat blue in the face. So, there's only two things that I have seen good from this process from my personal example. One is seeing how much the students and when the students found out, went to the parents, how much they care that a teacher like me is in my building. And the other thing, only positive that I can see, well, that and staff. And the other only positive thing I can see is the fact that I have a sense that I'm being listened to. I have had multiple people from the Board of Ed talk with me and say that, you know, it's important for people like me to be teachers within the district because I've openly said I want to be in the district. But the process for displaced teachers in the past two years has been inadequate and not showing respect. And teachers like me want to be in schools and districts where they're respected. And last year, when we were using this term of speed dating, wasn't that great. And the term that I've heard this year is that OTM is going to play matchmaker. So, once again, it does not sit well with me. I want it to be known that we need to keep teachers like me. Now, I know the focus has been on me, but I'm not the only person in the district that is a quality teacher, that's a young teacher. I'm not the only person being cut. It also goes past teachers, we're losing two SOs. These people that have a rapport with the students, they need to be in the schools because when you leave them, when you take them out of that system, you can't, they're not going to be the same person in new school. And it's important because especially at these comprehensive high schools where the students really don't have a choice, it's important that they form these relationships because then they stay in school. They actually feel like they have somebody that they can go to talk to. They feel like they have somebody that understands them and that can get them to the finish line, that can get them to graduate. And I know that I've had students where I have a connection, where I get to see them graduate and that I had a positive impact in their life. Whereas if I'm not there, I'm not, I can't have that impact. And it just needs to be said that we need to start investing in the schools. We need to start, we need to start investing in the schools and keep quality teachers in there because we don't do that, we fail the kids.
Bella Prominek, followed by Melissa Becky or Betsy? B C, I was wrong though.
Good evening. My name is Bella Prominek and I am a student at Hartford Magnet Trinity College Academy. In Hartford and cities like it across Connecticut, our schools are in crisis and it's a crisis of will, not resources. Last year, my school lost 19 teachers and staff. This year, 11 more are on the chopping block. This isn't just a staffing issue, it's a crisis of equity and a failure to support, nurture, and engage vulnerable youth. How are our students supposed to succeed when critical staff are disappearing from their schools? What does it say about our priorities when we fire the only Algebra I teacher in a school? When there is no one to teach chemistry, entire pathways in education are closed off before we even have the chance to pursue them? When we cancel the National Honor Society because no one is left to run it? These are not hypotheticals. They are the daily reality for students in Hartford and other underserved communities across our state. And yet, the silence is deafening. Anyone who isn't standing up and fighting back against this downward spiral is complicit. We hear excuses from every level of government, but we don't see adequate solutions. Let's be clear, Connecticut and the federal government have the money we need. Billions in federal COVID relief were dispersed to the state and local governments, including specific funds intended to stabilize schools. The government forgave massive corporate loans during the pandemic. Isn't it time we showed the same urgency and generosity towards our most important investment, our children? What is happening now is an injustice, plain and simple. Cities like Hartford are being forced to make devastating cuts because state and federal systems fail to provide sustainable, equitable funding. The over-reliance on local property taxes continues to punish the poorest communities while wealthier districts remain untouched. But despite all this, Hartford students continue showing up with grit, determination, and pride. They reflect the best of what Connecticut has to offer: diversity, resilience, and a drive to thrive in the face of adversity. What they don't deserve is to be dismissed, forgotten, or neglected due to political, budgeting priorities, priorities, and fiscal guardrails. If we truly value public education, it is time to act like it. That means hiring, not firing, teachers. It means fully funding mental health support, academic programs, extracurriculars, and safe facilities. It means treating our students not as liabilities, but as the future. City leaders, state legislators, and federal representatives. The question is not whether we can afford to fix this. The question is whether you have the courage to do what's right. The students of Hartford are doing their part. It's time for our leaders to do theirs.
Melissa B C, followed by Andy Lowen.
Good evening Superintendent, Vice Chairperson, and members of the Board of Education. My name is Melissa B C and I am here tonight on behalf of the Annie Fisher Montessori School Governance Council. I am proud to serve as parent co-chair of the AFMSGC. One of our tasks as a school governance council is to advocate for policies to improve our school and its programs. I wanted to talk tonight about our unique Erd Kinder Middle School program and ways to help it work better. Montessori schools place an emphasis on hands-on learning and developing real-world skills. Our seventh and eighth grade students get this hands-on learning through our partnership with Our Farm in Bloomfield. We have our own classroom and kitchen facilities on the farm created through a 2015 Connecticut State Magnet School Incubation Bond Fund awarded to Hartford Public Schools. Students at the farm work with animals, tend plants, cook in the kitchen, and learn how to make and sell products. The partnership between Annie Fisher Montessori and Our Farm has grown and strengthened over the years. Our Farm staff sit on our school governance council as community representatives and work closely with school staff to plan and improve the farm program. The Erd Kinder program is a draw for prospective Hartford Public Schools families and helps retain and engage Annie Fisher Montessori students all the way through eighth grade. My own sixth grader is excited to start the program next year. However, we have an ongoing issue with how the farm visits are classified by the district. The visits to Our Farm, which make up more than a third of the school year and are a central part of the curriculum, have always been categorized as field trips. This designation changes the required adult-to-student ratio from the normal classroom ratio and has posed ongoing challenges for staffing and coordinating the regular trips to the farm. Our school and our SGC have explored multiple avenues and approaches with the district over the past few years to address this issue, but we have yet to resolve it. As program enrollment grows, this issue is becoming a significant challenge. Changing the farm designation, farm visit designation from field trip to an integrated part of the curriculum would be a small policy change with a big impact on program sustainability. This would be a budget-neutral change. It would not add any costs and would actually decrease the demand on current staff. We wanted to bring this policy issue to the board's attention and request support and guidance for making this change. You will also hear this evening from Erd Kinder program staff and family members about the value of the Erd Kinder program and how this requested policy change will improve and sustain it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Andy Lowens, followed by Katie Eber.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Andy Lowens and I'm a parent of two children that go to Annie Fisher Montessori. My son is currently enrolled in the Erd Kinder program and my daughter will enter the program in about 15 months' time. My son is a typical teenage boy. When I ask him at the end of the day, how was school? I get a one-letter answer. Okay. What did you do at school? Stuff. Anything you want to talk about at school? No. When he comes home from days from the Erd Kinder, he rushes to tell me what he did that day. He has so much more enthusiasm for those days. At Our Farm, he's also learning new skills. He's learning how to care for animals. He's learning how to plant, you know, crops. He's also learning how to cook and is excited to come home and share with me how he made cookies on that specific day. I feel that the Our Farm, part of the education, the Erd Kinder program, is important for developing the whole child, which is a core Montessori principle. While my son's time at Annie Fisher will soon come to an end, my daughter will go there, so I'm hoping that this, will go there in 15 months' time. So I'm hoping this reclassification will help my other child and also many future and current students at Annie Fisher with this reclassification. Thank you for your time.
Katie Eber.
Good evening, folks. I am one of the Erd Kinder Guides at Annie Fisher Montessori and I have been here for three years and I can tell you just straight up, this is an incredible program. I have seen students who come to school who are sometimes just disengaged, tired, not wanting to do anything. And they head to farm and they come back energized, excited, ready, and willing and happy to learn. The skills that they get at the farm as part of our curriculum are things like literacy, science, math, team building, teamwork, communication. It is an important part of building a young person and building a citizen of Hartford, our surrounding communities, the United States, and the world. When I see my students come back from the farm, they are so excited to tell me what they've done that day. They are opening books, they are learning, they are ready. This is an important part of our curriculum. We consider the farm an extension of our classrooms. This is not a field trip for our staff or for our students. And so, what I really want to encourage the board and the superintendent to do is, within the next year, please, please come to Our Farm and see our students in action. You will see students who are communicating well, who are working hard, and also, you will have the best vegan Caesar salad you have ever eaten in your life. Thank you for your time.
Good evening Superintendent, Board members. My name is Michael Downs. I live at 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. And I'm president of the Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers. I'd like to speak on three things. One is the selection of the superintendent. Another is Mike Fathergill. And the other third is Hernan Lafontaine. The selection of the superintendent must be public. It's important that the, we know that in the end, the Hartford Board of Education will vote on the final selection of the superintendent. But we want to see the process as it goes along. And we're not interested in a nationwide search. It's better to have a person that's local, Hartford, greater Hartford, possibly even Connecticut, but not someone that is totally unfamiliar with the Hartford Public School system. So, it's, I believe that one thing we can't have is a nationwide search. We can't afford to have someone come in and spend three years trying to learn about the system before they could do anything. The second thing is Mike Fathergill. I was a young college graduate and just released from the United States Army for the first time. And I remember this, Martin Luther King was killed and assassinated and there was all sorts of demonstrations and I was involved with them myself. And this is an unfair, his expulsion from the Hartford Public Schools was totally unfair, a miscarriage of justice. The original people that made the decision are no longer here. They had a different culture. It's a culture that we wouldn't accept today. None of us, members of the board, myself, anybody in the city. And I remember a lot of the places, especially in the suburbs and even in the city, there were people that actually didn't like Martin Luther King. And there were people that were in the school system that didn't like Martin Luther King and didn't like people that were on demonstrated on his behalf. That was a miscarriage of justice at that time. We have to right the wrong. He should be given an honorary degree, he should be given an actual high school diploma. And Hernan Lafontaine came to the school system in 1979, the same year I started as a substitute teacher. I was just finishing up my degree in law school and also a social work program at St. Joseph College. And I remember him, he was very active in the school system. He visited every school. And at the time, I was a lot younger, so I was moved around from school to school, day to day. And so I sometimes see him three or four times or more a year. And I got to know him, my brother got to know him when he was on the city council and chairman of the city council. And he's a very accomplished person, very active, and certainly deserves to have a school named after him. So, classical magnet. He was actually brought here to establish a bilingual program that he had set up in New York City. And he was brought here by Youth Gaines and he, because he worked for her in New York and then she came to Hartford as superintendent and then when she retired, he, she recommended that he come to Hartford to establish this bilingual program, which he did. And he also, at the same time, later, established this classical magnet program. And he deserves to have that high school named after him.
Lee Ping Wong, followed by Carol Gill.
Hi, my name is Lee Ping Wong and I'm with Annie Fisher St. I'm here to speak about the need for training for Hartford Public Schools Administration on how to run open public meetings for SGC, PTO, and PTA elections in our schools. Families need to be able to participate in their language in which they can understand, publicize and announce in a timely manner, and not at the last minute when parents are mostly not available. PTOs, PTAs, and SGCs are vital in every school with full parent involvement and everyone should be allowed proper training, just like when we had Hartford Parent Organization Council, HPAH, and SGC training for all by Mr. Gillette's team. We now have CBOs to help with this but are held at bay from being able to do this. Why is that? Parents are supposed to participate in Title I Funds under the Every Child Success Act, the Student Success Plan for grades six to 12, School Accountability Plan, and School Compact, and Summary of Performance and Transitioning for kids that are graduating. My son's in the middle of transitioning, he's in eighth grade, and his student success plan is completely blank. I wonder why. When parents step down from any position... When parents step down from any position or leave, elections are supposed to be held by the parents to elect new parents in positions that are vacant to have proper PTO staff and properly seeded SGCs. In the interim, when everyone's stepping into these positions, our only acting positions until elected. AFSTEM PTO is a parent-led 501(c)(3) organization, and we have specific bylaws that we must follow. Both in October 2021 and this past October 2024, Hartford Public Schools District Administration took over our PTO elections and tried to run us as a PTA, which we are not. And the elections are supposed to be parent-led and not Hartford Public School-led. And in retaliation to parents and teachers of our school, our PTO could not follow our 501(c)(3) violations, bylaws, they said, because they said they were too old. We needed to change them. Well, you can't change them by yourself. You need the whole entire community to change them and have say. We're now allowed to do a used uniform sale for our needy families. It's been running since 2012, and now I have three families who can't get their merchandise as a result of being disbanded, which is unfair to them. Teachers were also told they could not talk to the PTO or any former PTO members, and we've been banned from the building, and there's no community or sharing in the building, which is quite sad. Parents do notice that. Now, our school has two major checks where no word to be found, because the administration doesn't know where they are, since the bank accounts were closed, and all the financial records from 2012 to December 2024, no one knows where they are. Since the Hartford Public Schools Administration sided with two executive board members who refused to provide the treasurers with all the receipts, parents' monies that they used spent in 2023, 2024, school year, bounced checks, reissued bounced checks, and not paying bills on time, now, you know, we've been disbanded. So we're, one of the checks belongs to the STEM side and the Montessori side for the library, and then one of the ones belongs to the regular, for the teachers and everything that's already budgeted and allocated, which we are not allowed to disperse. And there's also checks still coming in for BACs, United Way, and other donations from various companies, and free money that our school can use, but now is hung somewhere. We don't know where they are. Our schools also refuse to allow a town hall meeting and let families ask questions about these issues. This needs to be resolved and continued for the successful running of the next PTO. So if anyone wants to get ahold of me to talk about any of these things, they can reach me at Annie Fisher STEM. Thank you for letting me speak.
Carol Gale.
Good evening, members of the board and superintendent of schools. My name is Carol Gale. I'm the president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers. Tonight's agenda includes several motions that I'd like to comment on. First is the motion to award an honorary diploma to Mr. Fathergill. Not only is this the right thing to do, it recognizes perseverance, resilience, lifelong learning, all qualities promoted by Hartford Public Schools. So HFT urges the board to support this motion and award the diploma during graduation. Number two, there is also a motion to approve a contract with Teach for America. Teach for America offers a non-traditional avenue for entering the teaching profession, thereby assisting in teacher recruitment. HFT also supports this motion and urges you to as well. Number three, the consent agenda includes a contract amendment for a board-certified behavioral analyst through a brand-new day. Has the district reached out to its own staff member that is getting this certification or may have recently achieved it? Because HFT certainly stresses the importance of hiring from within before utilizing outside contracts. Number four, the consent agenda also includes a first reading of the board restorative practices' response policy. Restorative practices are regarded positively among educators. The biggest criticism of such practices is that they are not implemented with fidelity. Quoting the CAE model, quote, "The implementation of restorative practices in student discipline requires a level of time and resource commitment," unquote. It goes on further to say, quote, "Restorative practice does not mean that students who commit serious or criminal acts will receive a pass or some lesser punishment for their actions," unquote. To implement restorative practices correctly requires administrators to be well-versed in the method and to invest the time and resources necessary for proper implementation. As an educator who implemented restorative practices well before they were so named, I can attest to the long-term benefits if properly invested. Given that restorative measure represents a philosophy, also in the CAE model, HFT argues that the best way to implement restorative practices properly is by modeling their use from the top down. Having staff disciplined through the zero-tolerance approach and then expecting them to utilize restorative measures with students creates mixed messages as to the philosophical bent of this board and district. Not on the agenda, but needing to be addressed, is the superintendent's search process. I will reiterate here what I shared at the town hall. The process as outlined by the Board of Ed at that meeting does not include any opportunity for the community to offer any input on finalists. Community input is a concern raised by HFT since January. Such opportunity shows transparency, values members of the broad school community, and generates buy-in on the final selection. To cut out the community creates distrust, questions the legitimacy of the process, and sets up a new superintendent to take over a challenging job without buy-in. As I've shared before this board previously, democracy isn't always easy. In fact, it can be quite messy, but it is the guiding principle of this country and all the systems created within. Beginning with the first three words of our constitution, "We, the people, give the people a voice." Thank you.
And our last speaker, John Walton.
Good evening, Superintendent and distinguished board members. My thoughts are not going to be as organized as the previous speakers, but I will say this. I am a graduate and alumnus of the Classical Magnet Program, so to former Superintendent LaFontaine, I think he has earned the privilege of being named on our building. And Classical Magnet taught me some of the philosophical views that I have and I share with this board. But we are judged as a community by how we treat our elders and how we treat our children. That's how a community is judged, and to elder Fathergill, he has earned that right. You are not the orchestrators or the initiators of the problem, but you are a part of the solution. So what a great seat to be in, to give solution to a very deserving elder who will represent to our students what it is to be a success in the community. He is a community staple. Now, earlier sadly this month, I had to lay to rest my dear sister, Dr. Jerry McCann, which the superintendent attended and some of the board members, because you knew her. And Dr. McCann was a proud alumnus of the Hartford community, and we shared her with Granby where she graduated, and we shared her with many districts. She was the assistant superintendent at Middletown, and I don't want that to be lost, and I don't want our memory to be lost. I refer to her as sis. Many refer to her as Dr. McCann because of her accomplishments, but when she was at Belisee, she would oftentimes call me, and she would say, "John, what should I do here? What should I do there?" Because she saw the value in having that roundtable approach that I've spoken to this board about, right? She wasn't so engulfed with titles and accolades. She was engulfed with common sense and who could give the best or wisest advice to a situation. So she would call me and say, "John, what should I do in a situation such as this?" And I would give her advice, and that doesn't mean she always took it, but she valued my opinion. And why do I say that? Well, we have to begin to start taking ourselves away from who has all the accolades and the titles and all these grand backgrounds, and begin to really sit down and have a conversation with ourselves, and who's making the most sense? And who's really here for the right reasons and doing this together? Now, in the opening statements of these meetings, it said that the board does not get involved in the management of the day-to-day operations of the school. But I think we need to reverse that, because a superintendent needs help, especially with a school district like this that has so many moving pieces. We shouldn't leave it up to just one person. I actually think it's a disadvantage to us. And like Dr. McCann, who I refer to as sis, and her memory will live on with me, our superintendent is homegrown, and to the best of her ability, I can say just on my experience with her, even though I'm a tough critic, she's given me every platform to be able to speak and represent and advocate. Now, we probably don't agree on everything, because I give her some tough shots, especially considering her cabinet, but out of respect, this is democracy. Because she realized, at least with me, and I can only speak for me, that right or wrong, her position is accountable to people pay taxes here. And I've often said to her, "Be more authentic, be you." We're too busy worrying about trying to fit a leader's perfectionist model. Do they check all the boxes of education? Do they look the part? Are they a perfect person? Well, guess what? We're in an imperfect community. We actually need to start doing this together. We actually need to just stop with all of the pointing fingers, sit down at a table, have conversations, and start getting this right. And any superintendent we bring in here, we're going to need to help. I appreciate what you've done, right or wrong, and we have had our disagreements of what you've done, Dr. Torres, but you deserve to be thankful for what you have done. And we need to begin to start doing things together. Now, you have heard what I said about the search for the new superintendent. It should be open to the public, at least the finalists. And we should create the agenda topics to which that superintendent is presented in a seat like this, or the candidates in a seat like this, to see how are they going to give us a plan on what they're going to do moving forward? Because this community, this body, is who is going to be the grade for what that superintendent does or doesn't do. But they need it to be done with the community. We need a superintendent, a search for a superintendent, and to get a final superintendent that is a unifier. But in that unification, we have to address the fact that our system is broken, because that is the key. We have a spending problem in Hartford Public Schools. Now, I will thank the mayor for his early announcement of the additional $3 million, but mayor, we need more. Now comes the task of us as a body, as a group, to put away our egos, put away our disagreements, and begin to advocate for the state for more of the money. Now, we move our advocacy to Governor Lamont, because he can't afford to have a capital city that doesn't have a thriving public school system, because then everyone fails, right? And a community that fails, a capital city that fails, increases in crime and increases in the opportunity for our students to fall in a negative future. I'm actually, I'm being preachy today. I went over my time. I promised not to go too much over my time, but I want us to start working together. I want us to be of one mind. Yes, we have disagreements. I'm sure that sometimes I piss people off, and sometimes people actually agree with what I say, but I'm not here for popularity. I'm here for us to work together. I'm here for my child. I'm here for the children of this community. I'm here for the parents of this community. I know you are as well. But we've got to begin to change this system, and Superintendent, whatever position you move forward into, I want you to be your authentic self. Don't be afraid of being who you are, to fit a model that we don't need. And I hope that you guys understand that my criticisms sometime come from a place of good intent, but I have to be critical when I see things that are wrong. I appreciate the time, and I appreciate the opportunity.
That concludes Public Comment.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. My apologies for being late. I was at an event at another school, so. Thank you to everyone who came out tonight for Public Comment, and I promise I will go back and re-watch the ones that I missed tonight, because I genuinely do appreciate everything that everyone says and comes out to say to join us in the evening, so thank you very much. All right, we will now move on to the report of the chair. I will start with the board members in the community. Our board members have been very active this month. When I was putting tonight's, or when I was putting tonight's comments together, I was blown away by how much activity has gone on in the last month. So from the bottom of my heart, board members, thank you for all of your time this month and all the things that you've gone out to do. This past month, you will have found us advocating for funding for HPS by attending city budget hearings, testifying at the Capitol, and speaking at various press events, walking through Buckley High School to see the progress made to date, attending the Pathways Academy Themed Portfolio Project Day and Annie Fisher STEM Magnet School, along with this Connecticut Science Center to celebrate many students' successes, attending the Hartford Assistant Principal Leadership Academy graduation capstone presentations, attending the HPS Impact Awards that were actually emceed by our incredible student board members. It was a fantastic evening. They did a great job. Participating as a judge at the 2025 HPF STEM Fair, celebrating new scholarship, or the revised scholarship program with the Hartford Promise and the Class of 2025 Scholars, and meeting with various community leaders, teachers, principals, students, and others who deeply care about the Hartford Public School community. And next, an update on the Legislative and Advocacy Task Force. So the task force continues to meet to learn about upcoming bills and testimony opportunities. We just met last week. You can watch on YouTube all the things that we talked about. We are looking forward to attending Hartford Day at the Legislative Office Building on Thursday, May 29, starting at 3:30. We look forward to seeing you all there advocating for the needs of Hartford Public Schools. We are grateful for the support from the task force and the community, and I encourage anyone interested in getting, sorry, anyone interested in advocating for more funding for HPS to please get involved. If you wish to learn more, please contact Ms. Christina Santiago at csantiago@hartfordschools.org. I also wanted to thank the mayor and city council for their announcement today as they continue to find additional funding for Hartford Public Schools. It does help fill some of the gap in funding, and we will continue to work together to secure more, and we will share more information as it becomes available, but that press release did go out today. And then last, an update on the superintendent search process. So the search firm moderated a town hall meeting in April, and the board led two town hall meetings last week to continue to gather community input on the ongoing superintendent search process. We are so grateful for those who have provided their input so far in any form you have chosen to take part. The board is taking this process very seriously and is taking all we have heard with us into as we work towards making the decision on the next leader for our district. As of this morning, we've received 23 applications for the open position, many of which came from Connecticut. The board will plan to interview the candidates in the month of June. We have engaged the community through surveys, in-person and virtual interviews, focus groups, and town hall meetings in order to establish a robust leadership profile that will guide the process. Because of this, and because we have hired the search firm that specializes in superintendent searches, which will be doing significant background searches and work review, we will not be holding community interviews with the candidates. This process allows us to ensure we are able to meet as many qualified and interested applicants as possible. We value all input received to date and look forward to moving forward with this incredibly important process, knowing we have heard from so many of you. All relevant information and the application timeline can be found on the district's website. The application period closes on May 23, after which the board will meet with the firm to discuss the candidates. We want to be clear that the board has not yet reviewed any applicants and will not do so until that discussion. We understand that rumors can circulate during these times, such as the board having already selected a candidate. We assure you, this is not We assure you, this is not the case. Another rumor I'd like to address, as it continues to be misreported in the papers, is that the board did not review, sorry, renew the superintendent's contract. In fact, this board voted to extend the superintendent's contract through June of 2026 at the September 17th, 2024 board meeting. We hope this clarifies any misunderstandings. We are committed to governing with transparency and trust. As a reminder, you can find the superintendent's report, full committee reports, student reports, and all attachments and videos in this meeting's agenda on Board Docs. All committee and workshop meetings are livestreamed, as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved in each of the meeting's board, agenda on Board Docs. I highly encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions or feedback, please contact Christina Santiago, our board liaison, at csantiago@hartfordschools.org. We will now move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you and good evening, and I will expand a little bit on what Chairperson Hockenhall referenced relative to the mayor's announcement that the city will be providing an additional $3 million on top of the $3 million that they had already promised, and we are grateful for the additional funding and the opportunity at some point to reverse some of the high-risk reductions included in the budget for next year. As we understand it at, at the moment, the added funding is made up of 1.5 million in city funds and 1.5 million in corporate and foundation funding commitments. We are gonna seek additional information and details from the city as to whether there are any specific funding commitments to then engage collaboratively with you all as a board to determine what specific reductions would need to, you know, be reversed. As you recall, we had a 6.7 million in high-risk reductions built into the budget for next year. The added support from the city means that we will only have to implement about 3.7 of those reductions. We continue to advocate, like everyone else, many others are advocating for additional funding at the state level, specifically relative to supporting students with disabilities. We should know more in early June as to any additional state commitment to, to be added to what the city is, is already committing. And just a reminder that the budget for next year already includes a placeholder for $5 million in addition to, in additional support from the state. And so this was based on, if you recall, additional support provided the previous year to support us this current year, and then also the active discussions and advocacy for more funding to support students with disabilities. So when you think about all of these pieces, because that $5 million is already built into the budget, only additional state funding in excess of $5 million will be able to be used to further reverse the cuts. So, as an example, right, we would need $8.7 million in additional state funding to reverse the remaining high-risk reduction. So I just want to be clear that it is still, while this is a great update today, it is still a moving target, and we still have yet to understand where the legislature is gonna end relative to specific funding and ultimately, right, the state budget that gets passed. And if you don't, if you allow me, I just want to say that in Spanish, given that we've gotten some inquiries as to what the meaning behind the additional dollars mean. Como saben, el alcalde anunció esta mañana que el municipio proporcionará tres millones adicionales además de los tres millones que ya habían prometido. Agradecimos esta financiación adicional y la oportunidad de revertir algunas de las reducciones de alto riesgo incluidas en el presupuesto para el próximo año. Según entendemos, la financiación adicional se compone de 1.5 millones en fondos municipales y 1.5 millones en compromisos de financiación de empresas o fundaciones. Estamos todavía esperando un poquito más de los detalles del municipio sobre los compromisos, si hay algunos compromisos de financiación específico para entonces trabajar en colaborar con, con las juntas directores para determinar qué reducciones específicas podemos revertir. En total, como recordarán, incluimos los cinco, a los 6.7 millones en reducciones de alto riesgo en el presupuesto para el próximo año. Este apoyo adicional del municipio entonces significa que solo tendremos que implementar aproximadamente 3.7 millones de esas reducciones, así que se sigue con abogando por fondos adicionales a nivel estatal específicamente para apoyar a los servicios que se necesitan para nuestros estudiantes de educación especial. Esperamos tener un poquito más de información a principios de junio para, para saber si hay algún compromiso estatal adicional que acompañe el apoyo adicional del, del municipio. Y como recordatorio a la comunidad, nuestro presupuesto para el próximo año ya incluye una expectativa de 5 millones en apoyo adicional del estado. Esto se basó tanto en el apoyo adicional brindado el año pasado como en discusiones y también todos, todos, seguimos abogando, no? Para fondos para ayudar a nuestros estudiantes de educación especial. Así que dado que estos 5 millones ya están incluidos en nuestro presupuesto, solo se podrá utilizar fondos estatales adicionales que, que, que sean más de esos 5 millones para entonces poder revertir algo, aún más los recortes. Por ejemplo, necesitaríamos 8.7 millones en fondos adicionales a nivel estatal para revertir las reducciones restantes de alto riesgo. Thank you for that. Allow me to say that also in Spanish. I now will give just a brief update on the strategic planning. As some of you recall, we have partnered with Attuned Education Partners, funded through the support that we received from the Bar Foundation to continue the strategic planning work, which includes diverse voices from both central office departments and school-based teams. This team is not only reviewing, but internalizing the existing 2528 strategic plan, clarifying objectives and identifying key options and some next steps. This is actually a five-session planning process that will conclude later, mid-June, and so the first two sessions help the team ground themselves in the major work of the plan, which you initially had approved relative to priorities and, and objectives, and began identifying what's most critical. Over the next three sessions, they'll prioritize objectives, define key options, and finalize department-level implementation plan. I will be working with Ms. Santiago to identify a board workshop date in June to review the plan, especially within the backdrop of the budget and the recommendations from Public Works, right, the, one of the inquiries from the state, and the recent report that was given relative to the special education inquiry, which specifically summarized, I believe it was the first week of May, a summary, a report was given to the State Department of Education relative to the findings and the recommendations regarding special, special education. Some of the key findings included the staffing shortages that we know are severe in the area, specifically in the area of special education, overreliance on special education due to added and needed special educa, general education supports, excessive out-of-district placements, especially in open-choice schools with limited oversight, and unsustainable staffing models, specifically the pay gaps. Commendations highlighted the dedicated and, and staff and intended reforms already in place in Hartford Public Schools, reduction in, in district placements over the years, and the recently improved teacher contracts. Recommendation include updating recruiting strategies, redesigning special education roles, strengthening general education supports, partnering or contracting with external providers, creating an open-choice oversight team, and hiring project managers. As you hear me going through that list, most of those, actually all of those have resource implications. And so, the State Department will continue to monitor and support Hartford Public Schools. We acknowledge the challenges and will continue to address, to address them, and it is also an opportunity for, take the strategic plan, the budget, the budget, the additional resources that are being identified to, to fully mitigate, and then think about prioritization yet again. So, that is the work to come. That include, that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent. I believe that there is no report tonight from our student governance, as they are not here this evening. I'm sure they're busy getting ready for graduation. Oh. Hi, McQuandry. Good to see you. But there's no report, but we're glad you're here. Sorry about that. I can't see where the lights, there you are. All right, we will now move on to our business agenda. Item 4.1, approval, honorary diploma. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education grant Mr. Gerald Mike Fothergill an honorary diploma from the Hartford Public Schools. Do I have a motion?
No move.
All right. We will be voting on a matter of significant community recognition, the honorary high school diploma for Mr. Gerald W. Mike Fothergill. This vote marks an important application of our revised honorary diploma policy, which now allows us to acknowledge individuals who have made substantial contributions to our community extending beyond military service. This policy is a vital way for the board to formally recognize the dedication and impact of longtime residents within our district. Mr. Fothergill's application brings a unique history before us. As you read the application and numerous letters of support, they state, "Mr. Fothergill was denied his high school diploma following a student walkout after the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., at which time he was the only student expelled and subsequently denied access to adult education programs. Since then, Mr. Fothergill has demonstrated extensive dedication to the Hartford community, and we have received several letters of support and recognition of his work." With that, do we have any questions or discussion?
Madam Chair?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mills.
Don't worry, I'm not arguing against this, just for the record. So, real quickly, I just wanted to state during the public comment, someone mentioned that this should be done under the consent agenda. I think it's really important that we recognize that we are not doing this in the consent agenda because of the magnitude and the importance of this vote. I wanted to make sure that everyone understood that this is such an important thing, that we didn't want to just sort of stuffed under there in the consent agenda. I don't foresee any actual debate on this, at least I hope there isn't, but like, you absolutely deserve this vote on behalf of this Board of Education. And something else I wanted to say was that a great disservice and injustice was done on behalf of Mr. Fothergill. The board cannot undo the past, but this is just one small attempt to make amends. I heard in the public comment from Mr. Fothergill himself that he felt a lack of value in not receiving this diploma, and I just want to say this, that you had value then, you've had value for the last 60 years, and you continue to have value. This diploma is yours, and you've earned it tenfold, so congratulations on your long overdue honor.
Ms. Fortune?
I wanted to also add a little bit of historical context after the public comments. As I understand it initially, when this application was brought to a prior board, it was for a standard diploma, which was not an honorary diploma, which we do not have the ability to do. However, in conversation with Mr. Fothergill and the prior board, there was an agreement that an honorary diploma would, would be welcome, which we have now discussed during the policy committee and brought to the full board. And I also want to echo Board Member Mills' sentiments that, you know, I unfortunately cannot undo the past, but I do apologize for the injustice that occurred against you, and I do hope that doing this tonight, which we expect to be voting in favor of granting this honorary diploma, and in communication with Hartford Public High, they are willing to have you participate in the graduation ceremony. I hope this goes towards, toward undoing some of that injustice and making you feel like a welcome part of the community, which you have been and have earned over, well over seven decades. And I also am quite touched with a lot of the public comments today and just the history that we've seen tonight, in addition to Mr. Fothergill. We had Dr. Hernan Laffentain, who was the first, as his wife, Mrs. Evelyn Laffentain mentioned, was the first person of Puerto Rican descent to serve as a superintendent, not only here in Hartford or in Connecticut, but throughout the entire continental USA. And one of the people who testified in support of his petition as well, Dr. or attorney Constance Bilton Green, was the first African-American woman to graduate from UConn Law. So we've had some really wonderful history here in Hartford, and it's great to see more history being made tonight with granting, with the granting of this honorary diploma.
Mr. Hocken?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So, to Mr. Fothergill, I, I would reiterate, reiterate that this honorary high school diploma is the least that could be done to, to correct an injustice. I, I would say here, for the record, that I'm, I've been bothered by the underlying problem that you could not obtain an actual high school diploma, and so I'm going to pledge to the board member to, to look in that, to that again. Somehow, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling that somehow a person can be expelled from school and that somehow there's no way to actually correct that, that issue. And so what I'm saying, that if a rule doesn't exist, then let's create a rule based on your situation, if nothing else, moving forward. There ought to be a way, if an injustice has been done, to actually correct an injustice. And so I think your comments today was really a petition to ask us to do that. And so if we can't do it for you, we can at least look for a way to work to make some appropriation, to make that a, a method moving forward. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none. All, sorry, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education grant Mr. Gerald Mike Fothergill an honorary diploma from the Hartford Public Schools. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays, better not be. Abstentions? All right, the ayes have it, the motion moves.
You know, I was standing back there thinking about my mother at 43. She went back to school and got her high school diploma and became a teacher in the Hartford Public School system at 43. And she inspired me, you know, to keep learning and to keep helping, and this, right now, I believe really will cover the pain that I've suffered her by not being, completing my education. But with your help in establishing this, showing the worth and the value of the people that come from the public school system is important to us as a community. We get no accolades from the greatness that we do that comes from you providing the system that allows us to do that. So, thank you, I thank you. Please.
All right. On to contracts. Item number 4.2, contract continuation approval, Connecticut State Manchester Great Path Academy. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute the management agreement as negotiated by the superintendent and CT State Manchester for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th, 2030, in an amount not to exceed $2.9 million. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, Dr. Torres Rodriguez.
And I'll just give a brief update. I know that Dr. Fitzgerald is here. Hartford Public Schools was authorized to engage in a partnership with, back then named Manchester Community College Great Path Academy. This was in July of 2012. The signed contract commenced in July through June 2017. Years 2018 through 2020 were signed amendments extending the termination date. And fiscal year '21 was the commencement date for a new five-year contract through June 2025. And so here we are. The new proposed contract will commence July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2030, so another five years. The school enrollment for Great Path Academy in '24-'25 was 336. The proposed school enrollment plan for... The proposed school enrollment, HPS will be paying an estimated $2.9 million, so 12% of the total revenue, to CT State Manchester, right? That's their new name. And an estimated $1.25 million to Hartford Public Schools, 4.8% of the total revenue. So the Board, the request is for you to authorize us to sign the five-year contract extending the agreement between Hartford Public Schools and CT State Manchester for Great Path Academy, which is one of our magnet schools. Our team is here, in case you have any additional questions.
Any questions or discussion? Mr. Tatum?
Thank you. Thank you for being here as well, Ms. Fitzgerald. At the Teaching and Learning Committee, you mentioned some of the increased opportunities for enrolling in college courses that students at Great Path will have through this new contract. And I'd just like to give you an opportunity, if you could, to highlight some of those benefits to students that are part of this new contract.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having us tonight. I'm Dr. Jessica Fitzgerald, the proud principal at Great Path Academy at CT State Manchester. Thank you very much for your question. When I came to Great Path just about four years ago, students were able to take anywhere between 24 and 36 credits. We've had our students graduate, our valedictorian graduated last year with almost 36 credits. We're very excited about the new contract because it will allow us for our students to take up to 48 tuition-free college credits. It will allow them to take classes all year long, where we have just been limited right now to the fall and spring semesters. They'll be able to take classes in the winter and the summer. They'll be able to register at the same time as the rest of the college students, where right now we've been limited to about a month delay. And the most important piece is the number of credits and having that defined in the new contract. So they'll have access to the full 48. As you know, associate's degree is 60 credits. So we're closer to bridging them to a full associate's. And generally, the goal is to have many students be able to graduate simultaneously with the high school diploma and associates by the time that they're ready to be done with high school. So we'll be looking in the future to be able to fund an additional 12 credits for them to be able to finish from a 48 to a 60 credits, depending on the pathway that they're interested in. CT State Manchester also provides us numerous other opportunities. We have a great connection with their manufacturing department, where we've started this year 3D modeling classes, robotics classes, that bridge right to CT State Manchester's precision manufacturing program. The students have an ability to earn certificates in areas such as vet tech, phlebotomy, radiology tech, real estate. And those are additional programs that they can take outside of school hours. And then, of course, CT State Manchester is really supportive of a lot of our programming. They're allowing us for next year to do an esports room. In terms of the facilities, they're allowing us to put in a rock climbing wall in the gym, which again will be kind of a shared use room. So the partnership that we've had with them over these past 13 years or so has been very productive, meaningful for the students. And I think those are some of the next steps that we're looking forward to continuing that I just outlined, and I think there's certainly much more to come from there.
Any other questions, discussions? Yeah, Ms. Brody?
And I thank you. You do a good job advocating for our students all the time, so I want to thank that. But I did also, I believe, Paul Foster, this is your last meeting with us. I can admit publicly when I'm wrong on a vote. I did not vote for you to be appointed. But, so I will publicly say that I admit my faults and I will do them publicly. But you served us well. We've been through a lot over the last, through COVID. I mean, you served us well, and I wanted to acknowledge you publicly. And I wish you luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you, Ms. Brody, I echo that. Deputy Foster, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you. Thank you for educating me on the budget and all other things. It's been an absolute pleasure, so thank you so much.
Glad you came up here with me.
Yeah, I am glad you came up here. Dr. Fitzgerald, you also did a great job, thank you so much. So back to the discussion. Any further questions or discussion on the contract? Nope, all right, seeing none. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute the management agreement as negotiated by the superintendent and CT State Manchester for the term delineated in the contract ending June 30th, 2030, at an amount not to exceed $2,900,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? All right, the ayes have it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The motion moves. Item 4.3, contract approval Teach for America. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Teach for America for the terms outlined in the contract ending June 30th, 2027, in an amount not to exceed $150,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Dr. Torres Rodriguez?
Yes, we have partnered actually with TFA since 2007, 2008. They strive to serve as a strategic partner, seeking to place their core members in partner schools where they are wanted, needed, and can make the greatest impact. The candidates presented to Hartford Public Schools for consideration come from a broad range of academic majors, career fields, and diverse backgrounds. And prior to entering the classroom, TFA provides pre-service training to ensure that their members meet the applicable federal and even local standards or requirements set forth by the Every Student Succeeds Act and then other applicable state certification regulations. Again, they'll provide the additional professional development services and activities and facilitate the enrollment of individual core members in certification and licensure programs that then enable them to obtain the appropriate credentials to be classroom teachers of record. I will pause there, and we have not only our team member here, Ms. Williams, and also Dr. Garcia Blocker from representing TFA.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Walker?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. One, I think it's appropriate to say, welcome back? I think in the discussion, you may have departed us for a while, so I am welcoming you back and would encourage you in this journey with us to consider advocating for young whoopee teachers in some of our hard-to-feel areas because we would certainly welcome the opportunity to transition your participants to be full-time staff with us. So that would be my comment.
Ms. Brody?
I have a couple of questions. The first one is the $15,000. Is that on top of their salary?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so there's a two-year commitment. I know our history with Teach for America goes back. It definitely predates me on this board. And we've always had low retention after the... Because right now, they only require it to stay for two years. So... I'm trying to justify supporting, like, a temp teacher. So what, as far as retention... Because they don't have to stay, two years, they could be on their way. So are, do we know who the, like, the cohort participants? Do we know if they're local? Help me out.
So the partnership started in 2007. And over the years, we have hired 301 TFA core members to be teachers in our district. And our average tenure for a TFA teacher in Hartford has been 3.1 years. And that's something that we have cultivated with TFA over the years in seeking not only candidates for the hard-to-feel areas, but also teachers who are of color and also from the area and region. Because we did find that people are inclined to stay if they are in an area they call home. And so that's some of the work that we did with TFA over the years. And Lola can speak to more of the incoming core members and where they're from, and it's actually even higher.
So thank you for the question. It's an important question. When I was Chief of Staff in New Haven Public Schools, negotiating TFA's contract, I too was concerned about the retention and concerned about recruiting from outside of New Haven for teachers to come to New Haven. And so I was committed, coming into this role, to shift or add to our current recruitment model and recruit locally. In other words, I knew that there was talent in Hartford, in New Haven, in Bridgeport, in Waterbury Public Schools. And that was not, in the past, the model for recruitment. So when I stepped into this role, I realized that TFA's recruitment model nationally is to recruit at the flagship schools in the state. For Connecticut, that's Yale and UConn. We get lots of core members from Yale and UConn. The issue is, they're not from here, and they don't necessarily want to be in Connecticut. They preference and go to other regions. And so I decided that if we're going to be recruiting from New Haven, Hartford, Bridgeport, Waterbury Public School graduates, we really need to be in the state schools, because that's where many of our folks are, and in the other schools. And so that was my goal, coming into this role. And so partnering with Hartford Promise, New Haven Promise, Hartford Youth Scholars, all of these organizations that have, they know where their graduates are, and to bring those folks back. And so I do want to give you some stats about retention. And so what really happens, what people see is core members doing the two-year commitment and then leaving. What they're really doing is, the majority of them stay in teaching, but they go home to their own communities. They want to make a difference in their own communities. And so my thinking is, recruit locally, people are home, they want to make a difference in their own community. So, some stats on the folks that we have recruited. So right now, there are 40 TFA alums currently working in Hartford Public Schools. 92%, the last core that we had right before we brought a core, and 92% of the 2021 Connecticut Core stayed for a third year of teaching in Connecticut. So, our current core, we started early hiring because many of these core members committed way back in the fall, and we wanted to make sure that they had at least some job offer in their hands, because these are very talented people who we wanted to make sure were going to stay committed. So Hartford has conditionally brought in five core members, three elementary, one sped, one bio teacher. These are folks from Hartford Public Schools. We have an incoming core member currently now is a substitute teacher, and she will be teaching special education she wants to teach in Hartford and is eager for the hiring process to start. She is currently working at a school right now in Hartford where the principal is a 2011 core member. She did her placement at Burr and is an assistant principal right now in Hartford Public Schools. We have two other core members also currently working. These aren't people that are hired yet, but this is in addition to. We have two, a young man who is a substitute teacher at MLK, another young lady who is a comprehensive intervention specialist. They only want Hartford. They don't, they're not interested in any of the other schools. And so the focus is local, local recruitment. Bring Hartford Public Schools graduates and others back to the community. They're already here, they are very desperate to deliver impact in their own communities. So that is a focus of mine, to make sure that we are recruiting folks from the community who want to come back to the community and be retained here.
Ms. Teres Deladre?
Thank you so much. Actually, I have two comments and a question. The first comment is, kind of like in response to Board Member Walker's comment about young teachers coming in, young folks coming in. Seasoned individuals are, I would believe, would be welcome as well because of the information, because of the life experiences that they bring to education. That's one. The second comment is, I remember as a past Hartford Public School teacher years and years ago, when Teach for America was here, I remember teaching alongside some Teach for America teachers, and they weren't from here, they were not from Connecticut. And once their time was up, even before their time was up, they were great people, great teachers, but they wanted to go back to what you're saying, to your point, they wanted to go back to their communities and make a difference at home. I love that you are, it's homegrown. I love that you're taking individuals who are here, where this is home for them, and they have a connection, and they're going to be making a difference. They're already making a difference. My question is, and I did ask this question, and just kind of like plant the seed and start the conversation in our Teaching and Learning Committee meeting about Montessori. So we have two public... So we have two public Montessori programs, two public Montessori schools, and if you were here, you heard some of the talk about the Erdkinder and the great work that they're doing. There is already an establishment with a connection, a relationship with University of Hartford where they have a bachelor's program, I believe, a master's program that is connected to Montessori. And how, my question is, how could we start some type of connection or relationship with Teach for America and perhaps getting individuals Montessori trained? Because we also have a Montessori Training Center right here.
So thank you for the question, and to your first point, when I was a principal, some of the best teachers I ever hired were second-career folks, for the obvious reasons that you just raised. A good portion of our core members are professionals. So we recruit in two different places. One is the undergrad community, and then anyone who already has their bachelor's degree and beyond is considered a professional. So those are folks in graduate schools, those are folks that are already working. So do know that some of these folks, particularly the ones that I just mentioned, that are already working in pair or substitute roles in Hartford Public Schools, are coming in as professionals. They are a little more mature than the undergrad students. So I did some looking into the Montessori piece. And so as I understand the certification for, to be a Montessori teacher, is those people have to already have an existing certification, either, you know, an elementary certification or secondary content area certification, before they go on to pursue the Montessori certification. So the people that are being recruited and coming in, they do not have their teaching certification yet. They will get that over the course of their two-year commitment. And so it's after that that we can begin to think about the possibilities, open up the doors for them to consider an additional certification for Montessori.
Follow-up question, so, or for clarification purposes. So you're saying that these individuals, you're saying that they have to have a certification already, or no credentials?
No, to pursue Montessori.
Right.
It's my understanding that they have to already have an existing teaching license, either an elementary license or a secondary content area license. It's after that, then they would be considered for a Montessori certification.
That's not true.
Okay.
So, that would, I'm just, I'm a Montessori teacher.
Right, right, right. So then...
Yeah, but I mean, I have, I have the credentials already for, you know, K through six, but that is not the case for, for a public Montessori. So, once someone does the training, to become a public Montessori teacher, or to become a Montessori teacher, they do have to take additional courses.
Right.
So that they get the certification, but they don't have to have an existing certification? Because it's a unique endorsement?
Right, but, go ahead.
It's, yeah, so it's a separate endorsement. In our public schools, an elementary teacher with a K to six certification can be hired in one of our Montessoris. And then the training is usually, if they don't already have it, they would have to pursue that while they're in teaching here in the district and in one of our programs.
Not to say that Montessori would not, we couldn't have conversation about a Montessori placement, but our goal is to get our folks into probably the highest need, the highest need schools in the district where the most vacancies are. And I do know that a big commitment of the people coming into the district, they really want to be in neighborhood schools. Thank you.
Ms. Brody?
I'm trying to, because I just keep on thinking about the teacher that's still here, the Hartford High teacher, right, that's losing his position. And I see him everywhere. I see him at track meets, everywhere I go that got to do with our kids, I see this teacher showing up for our kids. I'm trying to justify a teacher's salary, $15,000 on top of that, and you don't have a teacher's certification. I am trying to digest that. You're going to be teaching alongside of our teachers, and it could be our hired teacher, we hired you, and you're going to have a individual who's hired to, that did not graduate with a teaching degree, making more money than you, and I just don't understand it. I can't, I can't wrap my head around, and you're only obligated to be here for two years. And if we statistically look at the data, it, I promise you, it will show that the retention rate is not, you listed some very good examples, and we're grateful for those people that are still in our district, but if we look at the history, because I have followed it, they do not stay. And I've worked in buildings with Teach for America teachers, and I hope that if this passes, I won't be voting for it. But if it passes, that there's something that's happening in the buildings that's, because the other teachers know, they know the circumstances behind it, and a lot of times, the feel is, especially like on that last year, so in your training, maybe working with these individuals, that last year, you hear things like, she checked out, she's not going to be here past June. I covered for a teacher for almost a full year that it didn't work out, because they were a second generation, not second generation, this was their second career, and it didn't work out by October. I covered that class from October to June. So I've had these experiences that just has not been positive, and we're paying these folks more than we're paying our incoming teachers, because they're getting the salary. And I just, I don't understand a $15,000 on top of it, and there's a two-year commitment, and if they walk away, it's fine. Like, I just don't get that part, and I'm not going to believe at a point, but I cannot support this vote tonight.
So we do actually pay for some of our non-certified staff to become certified teachers in the district through Relay, and that's something that we provide a scholarship for, and we require a two-year commitment. So they don't necessarily have the certification while they're working towards it, they teach under a Durational Shortage Area Permit. So this would be similar to that, that we already do.
Follow-up on Madam Chair? So Relay is the program that we were targeting, like our paraprofessionals?
Not only paraprofessionals, but full-time certified, non-certified staff, yes. And we also have some people who are non-certified staff who chose TFA. I think Ashanti Hyman was one of them, because they, TFA has been a partner of ours, and not only in coaching the teachers through the TFA core member model, but also in community engagement. And also, part of that work is partnering with us and our other educator prep partners to provide information sessions to our non-certified staff, so that way they can create their own roadmap to becoming a certified teacher here in the district. So some of our folks who are teachers in the classroom, they chose TFA as that model. I think we have one person who actually went through Central's program, but is still choosing to go through TFA, because you get the extra coaching, in-person observations, and also you're creating a cohort when we have these folks in our schools. And we're having folks who already graduated from TFA, in a sense, who are there to also act as mentors. We have some, we have a couple of principals who are TFA core members as well, and so they understand coming in, what these folks are going to be going through, and anticipating the needs, and creating those relationships with the teacher, with the coach from TFA, and then also our office, a professional learning, and the mentor that is assigned to them through the district, along with our coaching as well.
Yeah, so one, one thing, and I don't know if it has been changed, someone who was very excited about trying to pursue, to be a teacher through TFA, reached out to me. I didn't know, she didn't reach out to me personally, she reached out, I'm assuming she reached out to a few board members at the time. So if they are second-career folks, some of them, right? Her GPA undergrad was not, it didn't meet the TFA requirement, and that was a barrier for her. Like, if these folks are well in their career, and if we're still asking for some GPA from how many years ago, when they've had a successful career that they're working, and now they're thinking about teaching, and this was a person from Hartford? So those sort of things, if they were not barriers, I would be more convinced that, yes. And we do have, and I stand corrected, we have one shining star TFA-er, teacher, her nickname, Si, I don't even know Si's real name, but she, she came through TFA. Besides that, I've not experienced anything working in the building, or from some of the policies on how a person gets through. Because if you know for a fact that these people are Hartford-area people, and they are committed to this community, and this is where they want to be, versus an enticing, you know, amount of money to say, okay, we really want you to stick around, but the stats show, they are not sticking around for, compared to the investment. While we've had this long relationship with TFA, we did move away from this money part of TFA. Like, it was heavy. It was contracts that, hundreds of thousands of dollars. I've been following this before, I was a board member, and I never were, was able to really understand why Hartford predates Dr. Torres Rodriguez. Because I was like, wow. I sat in meetings, I spoke out against it, Christina probably could be my witness, 700, over $700,000, like, it was crazy money, and we kind of moved away from that. And I hope that we're not moving back to those big numbers, unless we're totally saying we are looking for these Hartford folks, that we don't have to convince that Hartford is where you should be. That is, I think, the direction that we need to, because people come and go, we see them, we see them on all levels of our employees. They come here, they get an experience, and they get a great experience, because we are a diverse school system. We offer many different programs, many different specialties, Montessori, STEM. So they come here, and they build a great resume, and then they're on their way. But we pay them a salary, but this, we're paying them a salary and a bonus, and the bonus on top of it is where I'm stuck at. But I thank you for your presentation.
May I respond to some things that, okay. So I hear you on the grade point average, because there are people that I have wanted to recruit who are working in schools, and we could, they could not even apply because of the 2.7 GPA in the undergrad. That's not a TFA requirement, that's a state requirement. That's a requirement to enter into a certification program. And so we could not admit someone into TFA knowing that they're not going to be able to get into a certification program, because that's the 2.7 grade point average. So that's who dictates the grade point average, unfortunately, because I agree, we do have people, I've seen people who are effectively paraeducators in classrooms, they're doing the work, they've been doing the work, but we go back to the undergraduate GPA. That is set by the State Department of Education for alternative routes to certification. The 15K, so that is not money that's going into the core member's pocket. So it's a two-year contract to support the core members over their two-year commitment to TFA. And so that money covers everything, starting from recruitment, the whole process, from recruitment to selection, the onboarding process, the training, the support, I'm sorry, the support over the summer, the support across the two years, that is what that covers. So the core members are not getting anything that a brand-new teacher, in terms of salary, would be getting, so they're not being paid any more than the new teacher next to them.
Mr. Walker?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Board Member Brody, I appreciate, you brought up a couple of comments that sparked my mind too, like, yeah, oh yeah, yeah, I had that question. So, clarification, so one, that $15,000 per participant is covering the two years, right? It's not $15,000 per year, per student window.
No, $700 per year.
And I will register that my same one minute about the 2.7, and I'm going to say it here, and I hope you will partner with me on this, because I'm willing to partner with you to go to CDSE. Say yes, DE, excuse me, State Department, C, 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 D, E, about this issue, because, because here's it, whenever, whenever I've ever had a GPA, because I've also talked to people who are fantabulous in schools, someone was trying to enter the Relay program, they got stymied in the same way. The GPA is always used by a program as an indicator of some future success. And in situations where a person is already in space and demonstrating some level of success doing that thing, now I'm like, what is the role of this arbitrary number if, in some ways, this success has already been indicated? Right? And so I'm just registering that if it bothers you, then I too am asking, is this 2.7 strictly at the State Department of Education?
Yes.
So, and, okay. So in some ways, it's also limiting the Office of Talent Management for Hartford Public Schools as well?
We've been working with some of our universities that have a little bit more leverage, like Central and USJ, to see if we could have folks enrolled on a trial basis, so that way they can take a couple of courses and get their GPA up, so then, that way they can then enroll in an educator prep program at those schools. So that's kind of the work that we've been doing, is, okay, so if we can't go this route with Relay or with the TFA, what else can we do to remove some of these barriers? And so those are the conversations that we're having, and utilizing some of our alliance and Title II funds to hopefully support that work, so that way we can also support those folks as they pursue their certification, especially for our non-certified folks who are interested in doing that. And we're also looking at folks who don't yet even have their bachelor's, because that is an untapped pool for us of high-quality talent, people who are working towards their associate's or bachelor's, and with the hope of becoming a certified teacher in the district. So looking at that long-term as well, not just for folks who are in the bachelor's, have the bachelor's.
So I think, as a follow-up, I want to advocate seeking some type of waiver from the state. I think the circumstances I'm hearing about, people who have bachelor's degrees, unfortunately, they may not be from here, maybe they're from Jamaica, maybe from some other place. There are people who are teaching our school district who already have degrees. There are people who have degrees that've come here from many places, they're from Albania, they're from Jamaica, all over the place, and they, they have degrees. And so they're not, what I'm saying is, in point of fact, there's no upside for that person to go take a class to try to prove that they can get an A or a B, because they've got their bachelor's from somewhere in the planet, and they just haven't been certified here in the state. And so, and so all that I'm saying is, I'd also want us to try to advocate to the state to understand these realities, and to give us the ability to have a waiver for people who have demonstrated they have all the skill, all the passion to be a... they have all the skill, all the passion to be a, to be a teacher. I like your idea of some kind of conditional situation, where they have to go and prove something in class. I would love that conditional to be in the coursework they're taking towards getting actual teaching, and not taking classes just to enter the program. That's all I'm saying. I think that we just need to be more flexible, if we're saying that we're scouring the planet to find all the talent we can, and if they have talent, all that I'm advocating is that we shouldn't have a 2.7 be a block for someone who actually demonstrated talent, they have academic credentials, and that would just be my comment, that I would like to arm in armor than anyone who wants to advocate to the state to have a waiver in addition to the conditional grade for students. Thank you.
Ms. Fortune?
So I'm thinking of TFA sort of of a parallel track to the Relay program that we have, and I recall us voting on a contract for the Relay program. So I'm curious to know, how does that compare in cost? I don't have the numbers for Relay, but I do remember that we have a cap as to the number of staff that could participate in Relay, because there is a cost factor.
So Relay is an educator prep program, whereas TFA does not provide the preparation, but they partner with Central, Relay, and University of Bridgeport.
For the certification?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess to ask it in a different way, given Board Member Brody's concerns about the additional cost of $7,500 per year per TFA participant or core member that we bring on, how does that compare to the cost for Relay participants?
I don't have that information in front of me, but I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Teach for America for the terms outlined in the contract ending June 30th, 2027, in an amount not to exceed $150,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
Absentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes. Item 4.4, Contract Continuation Approval: Community Schools. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with the community-based organizations listed below for the terms outlined in the contract ending June 30th, 2026, not to exceed the amounts listed, Catholic Charities and the Village for Family and Children. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Torres Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you. Community schools provide a strategy for organizing the resources of school and community around student success. The model employs the expertise of designated community-based organizations to serve both as providers of programs and services, and brokers of partnerships by leveraging resources. And the goal is to meet the identified needs of that specific school, its students, its families, and the community, ultimately toward the goal of strengthening and improving student success. And so if you recall our model, we consider every school to be a community school depending on the level. And so for schools with higher level of need, either Level III or Level IV primarily, they then have a lead agency that provides the services and serves as that broker of services and partnerships for that school. Examples of services provided include clinical supports and referrals, basic needs, social, emotional learning programs, health and wellness, a variety of programs either before school, during school, after school. And so we have here a, one of our community partners, and Representative Mr. Lebron, and Janelle is here from our team, Janelle Hooker from our team, in case you have any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent. Questions, Ms. Brody?
So I think it's a very public thing, what's going on with Blue Hill Civic Association, because I don't see Weaver, I, maybe you can just, I can start with helping me understand the schools and understanding, we have two community-based organizations listed here, but the funds are not anywhere near, close to each other. So first, a Weaver question, as far as if we have a community partner that pulled out, we know for a fact that the need is absolutely great at Weaver High School. So is there an opportunity to maybe, we're working on another partner, or what are we doing there? But also the comparison and how we're funding, the two organizations listed here are very different.
Correct. Good evening, everyone. My name is Janelle Hooker, and I are the executive director of the Strategic Partnership and Fund Development for the District. For this particular contract continuation, based on our financial constraints, the funding that we're using are specific to the North Hartford Ascend Pipeline Federal Grant and the Full Service Community Schools Federal Grant. In order to answer your first question concerning our Weaver High School, which is one of the five schools that falls within our North Hartford Ascend designation, for that particular grant, we're working directly with our funder, and really getting green light from the U.S. Department of Education, based on the situation that the community-based organization that used to provide the service at that school is going through. Our first messaging from them is that we would potentially be doing an RFP for that particular school to be able to get a variety of community-based organizations that can offer potential services for us to review and do a competitive process to identify an organization that can offer the services there. As of today, May 20th, that I'm here sitting with you, I am still working on the process to get that green light, to be able to put the RFP out, to get community-based organizations to apply. So more information to come on that. For the question around the amounts that are there listed for our services today, it goes back to the array of services that are being offered, it goes back to the number of students that are receiving the services based on the funding, that really help us understand how much money the organizations are receiving. Catholic Charities, who we have, Mr. Lebron here, is providing services to one school within that five schools that are under North Hartford Ascend Pipeline, so you are seeing the amount that is specific to that school and the number of students. The Village has a footprint in the three additional schools out of the five, which would have additional funding because of the number of schools and students that they have a footprint at. And then that would leave us with the last school, which would be Weaver, which we still need to decide for, in terms of the RFP process. Under the Full Service Community Schools Grant, which is where you would see the additional schools that the Village has a footprint on, on the south end of our city, that particular funding did not have an original designation for us to have a contract for community-based organizations to provide the service. This was more an evaluation grant. Based on our financial constraint, and reaching out to our federal liaison, because I'm the one that worked directly with the federal liaison for that grant, I was able to share the situation that we're facing as a district, and the community-based organization that was written in the original grant to provide services, constraint and limitation of funding, and there was a decision made by our federal liaison to utilize some of the carryover funds that we did not expend, due to not hiring staff at the beginning at the contract year, for us to reallocate that for the contract, or to divide the funds to the community-based organization, to be able to provide services to the schools under the Full Service Community Schools. So that addition also would show a higher increase in the amount for the Village, because that is the organization that has the footprint on the schools that we wrote on that federal grant.
I have a follow-up if no one has a question. I just want to make a point, question and then point, the, what you're working on in regards to Weaver High School, that so it could be in place for August of 2025, is that correct?
Correct.
The point I want to make is, I hope when we are, I hope through our RFP process, because through this budget cut, and we're asking the city to fund us appropriately, we saw the response of our, of our CBOs, right? So that helped me understand the CBOs that have folks that live in our community, and that will show up and fight with our community. So I hope, it was a large message to me for who showed up and who did not show up. And I think when we go through these RFP processes, we have to really look at who is really with us and is going to fight with us, and who goes silent and disappear. I just wanted to make that point.
I have a quick question.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Wilson?
Could you help me understand why, why Rosson doesn't fall into this? From like the Village standpoint, or is Rosson not a part of the North End Ascend Pipeline?
Rosson is not one of the schools out of the designation.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Walker?
While not here, you, the organizations serving Weaver, if you're putting on a RFP, will Blue Hill Civic Association or in its derivatives be able to apply to this, or are they barred in some way?
Based on the situation that occurred with them, and legal counsel from North Hartford Ascend Pipeline, there will not be someone at this time that will be able to access USDOA funding for the services at Weaver High School. Not to say, in the future, once they are able to clear their situation, should our district have additional funding to put out for organizations to reapply, that they would not be eligible. But for the particular funding that we're looking at right now, which is the USDOA dollars under the North Hartford Ascend Pipeline, we will not be able to have them be a part of the process at this time.
This question is about kind of capacity of organizations, because here, previously we'd heard a model of, you know, three organizations covering the city, the Village, Catholic Charities, Boys and Girls Club, and then Blue Hill Civic Association for the specialty area that they provide. If they're not available, I recently become aware that like a Hartford community that cares, has provided some services for programs that we have. Is there, and some focus of helping like an organization like that kind of increase its capacity, so that maybe it could apply to provide services in that part of the city, like for Weaver or something of that nature?
So one of the things that I know as part of the office we're looking to do, should we get the green light for put this out as an RFP, which that's what I'm waiting to just get that confirmation? We have previously, in our RFP process, have bidders conference or meeting with potential organizations that are interested in applying for our RFP, to be able to go over the requirements, what is needed, provide some technical support and assistance, as we do realize that a lot of our grassroots organizations need some additional support when it comes to an RFP process, writing a competitive grant and going through the process. We have provided that service, and we do look forward to having that as part of our process moving forward. But we do need to ensure that it is a competitive process, that organizations have an opportunity to apply, have a committee that's the one that review the application, take myself out of that process, so that is an objective process, and that it actually meets the needs of the schools and the students. So should we get to that point? Yes, that would be a part of our process, and hopefully here at this table again, sharing with you the different organizations that apply, the process that we went through, and who actually would be the ones that we'll bring into your attention for funding allocation.
Okay. One more follow-up, if I could, Chair. That's excellent information, and so we have a bidders conference, so I get that. Now, you mentioned a committee, so that's a committee that does this selection of the competitive bids. I guess committee composition, are community members, or parents, or students, who's on this selection committee?
That's a great question. So what we've done in the past, we have a representation of parents, we have a representation of members and in community that are not a part of who applied to the process. We've had a representative from our data and an evaluation team, because we do our tracking data as part of the work that we do now, since I'm overseeing this work. We also have a representation of someone from our MTSS, or Multi-Tier Systems of Support, because the community schools also are looking through those services. So we want to make sure that we have a lens of the different areas, based on what we're going to be assessing, that the application meets that, and that the evaluation process is an objective one, based on the needs that we're looking to implement in our schools.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Fortune?
So in looking at the numbers, it seems that not every student at each of these schools is participating in the programs being offered by the Village or Catholic Charities. So how are students selected to participate within the school that they attend?
Based on the model that we have in place, our community-based organizations meet with our principals or school administrators to review individuals that have a need that would be able to benefit from the services that are being offered. We also want to entertain our multi-tier systems of support processes or plans that have a list of students that could benefit from services like that. And one thing that we have incorporated is, out of the slots, we want to ensure that at least half of the slots are students that have a need, and we will be able to see that growth on the data that we're tracking. And then still open some slots for families that have been a part of the services, that they know that this is something that they can access. But we want to work directly with our school administrators to identify the students that would benefit from a service like this.
Follow-up question, so how do you come up with the total number of students for a given school? Is it based on, say for BRRRR, it says 34 students, is it because historically we've done 34 students, or that's what the data shows the need is? Do we continue to service 34 students? Should it be lower, should it be higher? Just curious how we come to those numbers.
So the numbers that you see on the document that you guys have is based on the funding. So based on the cost per student that our community-based organizations have offered in the budget that they offer or they provide, it allows to really look what's the cost per student for the services being offered, based on the amount that's allocated at this time, we're talking about BRRRR, I think we're looking at 61,200 and something, that we need to divide on the cost per student, which brings us to a total of 30-something students to be offered there. So it's based on the budget. If you look at the Village and another school, it would be a little higher, or if you look at Catholic Charities at Milner, they have a different number of students as well.
And is that difference in the cost per student because of the type of services being offered? I imagine, for instance, the Village has the ability to offer a lot more services than, say, Catholic Charities could, by virtue of them, I think they have close affiliations with medical professionals, behavioral health people, so is, does that reflect the difference in the cost per student?
Correct. And I have a representative here with me tonight that I would like to bring to the table as well, so that he can give some context from his organization perspective.
So thank you for the question, and thank you guys for your continued commitment to the students of Hartford. What I will say is, in comparison from Catholic Charities to the Villages, that we do have CCBH, and so we do have medical and clinical referral services as well. I think the differentiation is the approach that we use. I can't- I can't speak for the village, but for Catholic Charities, we provide a wraparound support through a core four programming that focuses on clinical, behavioral, case management, basic needs. We run food pantries and we have the after, traditional after-school program. So throughout of that, we try to provide all of those comprehensive services. So I don't know what the, you know, other community-based organizations' rates are, but the, our rates are reflective of that comprehensive model that we deliver.
Thank you.
I think, um, one thing that I would add, that the data has shown, at least in the two years that I've been tracking information from our CBOs and the services that we're offering, is that while we're sharing with you a number of students that they're going to serve, at the end of the school year, they do end up serving more students than what the original proposal has, where they are able to maximize resources or funds that they have outside of what we pay them so that they can offer the services to more students. So this is a threshold based on the funding that we allocate for them. They also add their own, uh, resources and it always comes back to a little more students than the ones that are on the original proposal, at least in the two years that I've, um, reviewed that.
Thank you. That's, that's really helpful to know.
Sorry. Go to Mr. Walker and then Mr. Mills.
Okay. I promise, super quick too. But since you, you brought up, got to this funding and, and Mr. LeBron is there. Can you confirm, uh, these, um, organizations like yours, do you match the funding or can you confirm that you guys usually bring a, a pot of money in addition to what we offer, correct?
Yeah, so not only do we, um, one of the things, when the model first started and when this superintendent introduced the model, was that as CBOs, we bring internal, um, resources, right, within our own organizations. But the other thing is, is our capacity to try to seek out for other funding. And so with the community schools, at least at Catholic Charities, we focus on a braided approach and braided funding approach. So we look at every avenue of funding and we apply from philanthropic organizations to the state, to federal dollars at times. And so that's how we try to make it work, um, in terms of funding. So, um, did that answer your question, board member?
Yeah, I guess I would just ask, I mean, percentage wise, what is that? I guess I'm just asking typically, does that mean you guys bring up 25%?
I mean, it varies year to year. I've been in this role eight years and it hasn't been the same any year. So we've had, um, you know, I also remember we were also under COVID as well, so there were different fundings for that. And so the percentages is very difficult to give on any given year. But what we do promise in terms of a percentage is 110% commitment to try to find funding for the school. So that is a percentage that I can give you.
One thing that I would add as well is that as part of a lead organization, it is, uh, part of their role to be able to broker additional providers to come in and provide services. So they're there as lead, but as they meet with principals and understand the needs and, and there is the need for additional providers to come in, they're also utilize their relationship with other organizations to be able to provide service within that school as well. So while we see Catholic Charities here with me today, Catholic Charities at Milner does have at least seven or eight additional organizations that they bring in to provide additional services within that building.
Mr. Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. LeBron, it's good to see you here again. Always happy to see you. So two questions. One, you have been here recently and the funding sources that was in the previous amount, does the amount, does the funding source mean that the services you provide varies? Like, do you, you know how you have different grants and they have different requirements?
Yes, so, you know, in years past, we had a Cigna grant that was focused on nutrition. We've had, um, you know, food share grants that is focused on the food pantry. We've had, um, you know, gardening programs, smaller grants. We've had grants that, micro grants for $500 for, um, supplies for our, you know, some of our, um, youth development specialists. So, though, yeah, the Love Your Block grant. So there are various types of grants that we provide and then based upon the funders' expectations, we try to tailor the program. But I will say that we try to, you know, kind of bend but don't break, right? Like not extend ourselves to, uh, a degree where we're not providing, uh, our core four service, so.
And that's excellent because my follow up question was then, does the material, does your support change materially from school to school?
Yeah, um, actually, I think that, that's a great and an important point. I think that fundamentally with all three of our schools, Catholic Charities has a footprint in three schools, we, we meet regularly with the principal and we try to tailor things to the needs of that community. And so, um, I think it's very, it's a very important partnership and our ability to be nimble and flexible to the community and principals' needs is of, I think, the utmost importance in order to fully operationalize an effective program.
Thank you very much. I'm sure we'll see you back here soon.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with the community-based organizations as stated, for the terms outlined in the contract ending June 30th, 2026, not to exceed the amount listed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion moves. Uh, item 4.5, contract approval, Relay GSE. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with the Relay GSE for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th, 2026, at an amount not to exceed $159,080. Do I have a motion? Second, uh, Dr. Torres Rodriguez?
Yes, for background, um, Relay's framework is designed to build internal capacity of both leaders and teacher leaders and they provide staff with the skills, resources and systems needed to sustain their work independently and ultimately reducing the need that we have on external partners. So through the lens of, the connection here is through the lens of supporting our, uh, cradle to career efforts embedded in our community schools model. That's the cradle to career model that we're trying to, to strengthen. We are aiming to increase student academic achievement by building the instructional leadership capacity among our teachers, leaders and central office staff in those specific schools that are supported by the community schools and North Hartford Ascend grants. And so I have a team here to speak. I know Dr. Ratley is here with a variety of team members. Janelle is also here again because, um, the funding is again a braided approach, North Hartford Ascend, and also the community school work that we're, uh, we're attempting to do. And so this is, um, the, the, the parallel support structure, if you will, to, um, providing that holistic support. We want to provide, yes, the wraparound supports for students, but there's the other infrastructure around instructional leadership support. I'll pause there in case you have questions for our team and the Relay representative that is also here today.
Thank you, Superintendent. And just to clarify, this Relay GSE is not the same as the Relay program that we were talking about a moment ago. Under, I think we were all thinking it. But it's not, right? It's, it's a different contract because we've already approved that one.
It is a different contract and it's also not TFA. It's completely different.
Thank you so much. All right, with that, uh, do we have any other questions?
Mr. Tatum?
Could you expand on that for a second? Just, just in the briefest terms, like, help us keep those separate in our minds, the two relays or the contracts?
Yes, so Relay in this case, um, is a separate contract. And so the team, you could speak to the instructional leadership support track that we're hoping to provide with this one.
Yes, so this arm of Relay is definitely around professional learning for those already in the seat. What was discussed earlier was a teacher certification track. This is not for teachers.
To get people in.
Exactly. So this work will be with principals, principal supervisors, and then select teachers to create that, that, uh, community around instructional practices that support students once they get in the building, so.
I make a motion that we give them different names just for less confusion in the future.
I think that the difference here is this is the first time that we take this approach to that integrated model. Ideally, when we think about our cradle to career, it's kind of supporting the student all throughout, but then we have to think about the infrastructure that supports the adults in the schools to support the students. So, um, perhaps team, we can think about it in a different way. But this is why it's the first time that we introduce the, the approach.
Mr. Tatum?
There, there are many like approaches to professional development and many models. I wonder if you could speak to how this model reflected in this contract contrasts with more, um, contracts that have been approved by this board in the past with consultants that will come in and offer coaching or offer, you know, work oftentimes with the same population of people, thinking about principals, thinking about district leaders. This feels like it's something different and I, I would just like to hear more about the differences in the two approaches.
Sure, I'll start out and then I will tag one of the team members who's actually had a little, some experience with it to give more insight that's more specific. But as the superintendent mentioned, this is more building the instructional infrastructure in the school. So it's not just training teachers on a concept or training teachers on a style or approach to instruction. It is actually building the infrastructure so that when feedback is given to a teacher, we actually come back and look for that practice, not just in teacher practice, but then also, um, comparing it to student outcomes. So there's a whole cyclical approach to it that is not the same as just a simple training or one-time thing and just in one isolated way of practice. It's actually building a model within the school that's led by the principal, that's also tying to what the principal supervisor is doing when they come into the building to also make sure that we maintain that focus on instruction. And then secondly and finally or thirdly, it's also about making sure that we allow the space for true learning to happen. So it doesn't come with all of the knowledge. It actually opens up practice so that as teachers are contributing to this whole body of knowledge, we're able to use that to apply it to other areas. So you'll see in the whole outline where we have the eight schools that are identified, but we also worked with our partner to ensure that we could get a shadow school that's not part of one of those grants, but allowed to actually come in because they also have a strong foundation to be able to do this work and be a part of that learning model so that we could expand it. If Mr. Thompson would come forward, he could give a little more insight into the specific experience in terms of Relay.
Dwight Thompson, um, thank you so much for allowing me to be here. I have gone through this multiple times as a former principal. It is very practical. It is very, um, a unique approach as principals and teachers, they think about, okay, I've got curriculum. So if you think about for the elementary level, implementing wit and wisdom and it's so many components that the principal has to monitor, but it's very, very practical. So, um, the piece that's really neat is that during the summer, you're able to practice and the principal really has the opportunity to think about, how do I monitor this? And what are the questions that I ask? What are the things that I need to expect from my teachers? And they actually get to role play and do this opportunity with the teachers. And the teachers will also have the opportunity to help the principal to lift this work, um, as well. But it's not, um, completely, um, separate and in more, but it's really the work that they're doing. A lot of the principals, um, that we're working with, particularly, I have five schools that's in the, um, North Hartford Ascend Pipeline, um, they just need an extra push or an, an extra, um, set of tools to really do the work and to really push outcomes. And I think this opportunity will allow them to do just that. But it's very, very practical, um, where you'll see principals and teachers side by side at a table and being able to develop a plan for their schools. But they'll come out with really key next steps that will launch them ready to go for August.
Mr. Walker?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I guess my question was in that same line and, and I'm just going to open by saying that maybe beyond this meeting, I will have to maybe come out and see to appreciate. And so let me set the table this way. I think what I'm thinking in terms of what we've seen already funded, there's, um, there's already funding for teachers to get more education, there's some funding for, for coursework. And then there seems to be, um, fellows program for, for APs and then for principals to kind of also, kind of build their professional chops. And then I've heard teachers talk about what they want from evaluation process, right, is less evaluation, more coaching. And so what they communicate is they want to kind of have almost a lead teacher that they can kind of bond with and, and they work things out and that way where it's more trust built. So now, is this something else in the basket? And how does this differ for that? Like, what's the, the thing that's different that's happening here that's not happening in those other lanes?
Because this is a way of work that's being instituted, it actually ties those knots together. So when we talk about evaluation, we're not just getting to the point that we're scoring or measuring what, how a teacher has done. We're actually building their capacity along the way so that by the time you get to evaluation, there aren't any questions because both have learned and grown together throughout the process. And so when we think about the work we've done, say with PDEC this, this year, this folds right into that process and helps them to all pull those together. When you talk about teacher leaders, it's the reason why we want a teacher at the table to be able to participate in this learning because we know the value of the teacher leaders in what you just mentioned. So this is a way of work that helps to pull all of those pieces together and not another thing on top of in order to distract people from. Exactly what we need to be doing, which is making sure that we end up having students move the dial on, on their, on their performance.
Okay. Yeah, follow up question. Yes, I'll, I'll, I will believe you. I'm in your hands on this one. I, I get what you're saying that somehow this is some overarching process that kind of pulls the other pieces together and, and coordinates and, and makes it all make more sense. You've mentioned tools though a lot. So does this mean there's also kind of some kind of monitoring direction tools? So people's growth can be captured? Like, are there tools that, that are part of this beyond just the, the role play and the training?
Yes, and when we think about it, it's not just being able to access resources that I might need at one point in time, but it's really building the capacity of the educator to self-lead so that it's lining up exactly what we're looking for together in terms of student outcomes. What are the practices that go in place for that? But then also positioning them to really self-lead and be able to determine what they may need to do when they identify that a student is not learning in the way that we intend for them to. You brought up a good point about seeing it in action and I just wanted to ask Mr. Klumpus to come forward. Who's with Relay, just to talk about, there are some schools in the area, which is part of the reason why when we were looking for organizations, we leaned this way, that have als- are also implementing wit and wisdom, which we know is year one of that, and using Relay as well. And so if you could just share about how that's worked in the school that's right in New York then?
Yes, of course. Hello, everybody. My name is Dr. Ben Klumpus. I am, uh, Vice President of Partnerships at Relay. I've been with Relay for 10 years. I'm a former district teacher, uh, have been a school leader and was a founder of our National Principal Supervisors Academy, many, uh, about 10, 10 years ago. Over those 10 years, um, Relay has, has grown to, um, to, grown its model to, uh, to reach more than 100, uh, charter management organizations and districts, which split about 50/50, uh, across more than 30 states across the country. We have deep partnerships in a number of, um, a number of, uh, of communities and district partners, um, including a very large partnership in, in New York City. We're working right down the road in Holyoke, have helped to lead, uh, District of Holyoke out of receivership. And, um, to your point, in New York City, uh, the work that we're doing there, I think is really innovative and really exciting to see leaders and teachers in the same room together, learning to do some of the most important work, which is implement high-quality instructional materials with a high degree of fidelity so that every kid, every day, has access to high-quality, standards-based instruction. And so that's the work that, um, that we do and we think that the, the- And so that's the work that we do, and we think that the approach that you're taking and that we've co-constructed is very smart, working both bottom up and top down to really build alignment up and down the system so that it feels coherent to educators, it feels like we are raising the bar for students, and it's leaving educators across the system feeling more successful.
Quick follow-up. Sounds exciting. The curriculum that you're focusing on, would wit and wisdom be that curriculum? Or is it something else?
Yes, we are not steering away from wit and wisdom. So the wit and wisdom will remain as the curriculum. These are the practices that go into place when teachers and leaders are monitoring the progress of students. So this will be done in tandem with. It's not on top of. It's a way of work that actually opens itself to whatever curriculum is going to be used. And we're going to stick with wit and wisdom.
I got it. But you're using it there. Here's my comment, is that next year, what I'd love to see then is the impact of this. Like, what I experienced this year was a principal who was slightly stressed because she was feeling all the pressure her teachers just not having everything they need to do it, and she was trying to be supportive, and you could feel the struggle. I think based on what you're saying, next year, we're going to hear stories of how everyone's capacity, principals and teachers feel like they're partners. And so next time when we have this, those success stories hopefully will be at the table, and we can really celebrate that.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Zeller?
Thank you so much. I just have a clarifying question for Board Member Walker. Was this a, like, I need, I have a clarifying question. Can you just say a little bit more about this experience or this?
Sure. That when we wrote up wit and wisdom, there was a model in which we were having coaches that were going to descend into schools, and these coaches were going to help teachers build their capacity so teachers could effectively deliver wit and wisdom and work with students and be effective in the practice of delivering wit and wisdom to students. And because of decisions we made last year, we essentially removed a bulk of the coaches. And so a lot of the capacity a district had to deliver this support for teachers just wasn't there. And so teachers rolled out into the year, they delivered wit and wisdom, but they delivered it without the support that we had in our plan. And so, you know, people did what they did, but I got that there was slightly more stress in it because some of the supports that were supposed to be there by plan just wasn't. No one's fault, it's just, you know, decisions were made. And so I'm hoping what you're saying now is a new way where maybe we'll get a different kind of outcome.
Just want to add a little context as to, if you all recall the strategy, we were leveraging COVID relief funding to have a robust core of coaches to support. And given the state's legislation around the right to read that required districts essentially to pause and be in alignment with their specific requirements, the curricula that were on the list, our process, which included extensive engagement with, per the policy, engagement with community, inclusive of our teachers, had to be put on pause. And so we had to then submit the waiver. It extended beyond the last year that we had of COVID funding, and so our strategy was compromised. So I just wanted to remind us that we did have a solid strategy, and so here is yet another opportunity for us. Of course, it's not to the extent that we have initially planned with all of the coaches, but it is a way of adding additional support.
She said it better than me, but that's essentially.
Thank you. That makes sense.
Seeing no other questions? All right. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Relay GSE for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th, 2026, and an amount not to exceed $159,080. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? All right. The ayes have it. Thank you for your presentations tonight, and thank you to all the presenters tonight whom I forgot to thank as you walked away. So thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and presenting in front of us today. All right. Item 4.6, Second Reading and Adoption, School Closing Consolidation and Relocation Policy. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education adopt a school closing consolidation and relocation policy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Board Member Fortune? Sorry. Do you have a presentation or a discussion on this?
I'm happy to go over it. So this is a revision to our school closing policy. I should preface it by saying we haven't started or we're not currently having any conversations around actually consolidating schools. This is simply a policy. Should we consider consolidating schools down the line? We have a new revised revamped policy ready to go. This essentially shortens the prior policy that we have, and then it will be supplemented by additional administrative rules. And it addresses the process that we would go through should we choose to consolidate schools and what the board's role would be and what that process entails.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Board Member Tatum?
Just one sort of point and then one question that I have about what I think is a typo that might require some revision. First, just like to point out, in the policy, it talks about establishing a committee that would be making a lot of recommendations related to consolidation or closure. And just like to note that that committee by this policy has an awful lot of power over the process and the ways that different factors would be considered. So just like noting the importance of that committee's work as this policy outlines it. And then the question that I have is about language. On our page, it's the very top of the second page. It reads, "Any final decisions concerning the closure, consolidation, or relocation of schools, school buildings, facilities, and/or grade levels shall be made by a vote of the board. Such vote," and then it says, "shall and may be informed by at least two public hearings as set by the board." It feels like it should either say shall or may, and I'm wondering if there was an intent there.
So we actually did address this during the committee meetings, and it is supposed to say shall be informed, not shall, may. Actually, Attorney Wilson brought that up, and we clarified that it is that the vote shall be informed.
Perfect. Thank you.
Board Member Brody?
I just wanted to bring attention to the number one on academic criteria that may include but is not limited to school academic performance. That right there puts a target dead-set on some of our schools that many times, I know I've expressed, we have, due to Chef versus O'Neal, we have a two-tiered system. One, that we break up concentrated poverty, and it looks magical over there. Then we have our neighborhood schools, which we cannot break up concentrated poverty because we can't cut off enrollment after October. We can't do a lot of things because we are restrained by a lawsuit. So I'm hoping, if this passes tonight, maybe it could be a revision as suggested, but this definitely puts the targets on our neighborhood schools that are not as well-supported when it's time, if we ever have to visit school closures. So this is not equitable in that way. I just wanted to bring that.
Board Member Tatum?
Yeah, just responding to that point is related to the point that I made about the power of that committee. The way I read the policy, the academic criteria such as, you know, school academic performance would be included as a criteria in the committee's recommendations, but it doesn't say how that committee would be interpreting that data. In theory, the committee could see low academic performance and consider that a reason not to close the school and invest more resources. Just that's not dictated by the policy, and so that would be a conversation that that committee would have about how to interpret that data. But I share the concern absolutely that
Board Member Fortune?
The impact that it would have disproportionately on different schools in the system.
I think Deputy Foster may have a few comments on this, as I know we've discussed this policy quite a bit. And the administration will come with some administrative rules to supplement what this policy states.
Yeah, I think the most important thing to know is that the policy is really, the power to make a decision about closing or consolidation of schools remains with the board. And really, the purpose of the ad hoc committee is to do the information gathering and fact-finding to inform that decision. And so our attempt with those numbered pieces, like, the point is really well-taken about the academics and not all our schools are the same, right? And they don't all face the same circumstances. So I think the reason for the numbered was really to give guidance to that ad hoc committee, to take a holistic view and not miss stuff, right? Not look at only one thing or another thing, but to take a holistic view informing recommendations. But then ultimately, that committee is gathering data, doing the work of looking across all of those criteria, and then coming back to the board and making a recommendation. But ultimately, you would be weighing that, right? And ultimately, it'd be up to the board to decide how much you want to weigh academic performance versus all of the other things that are talked about there.
Just to offer a little historical context, as many of the elements here were identified the last time that there was a set of school, we consolidated and redesigned the district. And to raise an example here, there were conversations in issue, and I believe prior to the board vote, the previous leadership and the recommendations actually had decisions and schools identified an academic performance was a criteria. Then the next, when we engaged in the process and doing our data dive, one of the elements that was identified was that while on paper and on the screen, there were schools that were low-performing schools, historically low-performing schools, as considered by state accountability standards, we internally identified that they were significant inequities in funding. And so that was one of the things that the then-board had conversations around, not making a decision or recommendation solely based on that, given that internally, decisions had been made previously to fund schools the way they were significantly inequitably compared to magnet. So I just wanted to raise that as an example, that it was something that was addressed in the past. And I'm not sure that all the comments or discussions that took place, as you all were considering, whether or not to leave that there. But it was heavily discussed, and it became then a more holistic approach to determining the schools that would be on the list, primarily driven by the condition of the school facility.
Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to lift up a thing what Deputy Foster brought up, which is, the policy is to set up the framework, and I share your concern with academic performance, but I want to lift this out of this policy and as a board, to really address that with performance and evaluation, address it in its appropriate venue. And because what we're bringing up is, in essence, saying that we shouldn't look at some top-level score or test score. But that's a topic to me for how do we evaluate? How do we look at performance outside of this particular policy? But from a policy standpoint, we have to list every possible thing that you could think about. And that's all I want to say, that the framework, I think, is doing what it's supposed to do as a policy.
Through you to Board Member Brody, would any of your concerns be sort of, you know, just like, would any of this be fixed if they weren't numbered and/or in a different order? Like, is your concern based on the fact that academic is the first thing on this list? Would any of your concerns be allayed if it was bulleted as opposed to numbers? Because I think that implies rank and slightly reordered. Would that help at all?
Through you, Madam Chair. We know the schools that struggle with academic performance, and we know they're our neighborhood schools. So just that that is listed. Because to the superintendent's point, we know if we don't adequately fund the school, you can't address the issues and remove the barriers and provide the supports because you just don't have the funding. So it's like you're being, it's like, to me, a penalty to a school who just don't have what they need and they're bogged down with the things that come with concentrated poverty. So it's not really the order, it's how I felt when I read it. I'm sorry.
Ms. Fortune?
I think I hear you, Board Member Brody. And, as a superintendent like to say, and, I think we also do have to consider academic performance if we're considering consolidating schools. It's just, right, the inherent business of the school is to educate. So I don't know how we could possibly undertake such a decision or consider that without looking at academic performance. And I think the structure of how our schools are funded is very complex. I know Chef is now in its fifth reiteration. I would venture to guess, and I will go back and study the prior versions, I think at some point, there must have been a version that actually really encouraged opening additional magnet schools, which is why we have so many magnet schools. But also, the additional magnet school funding that we get is for suburban students who attend our magnet school. So if we're thinking about consolidating schools, which is primarily for cost-saving mechanism, it becomes that much harder to look at schools that potentially bring in extra revenue versus schools that do not bring in extra revenue. So I say all of that to say, I think if we do have to consider this down the line, there's just so many factors that will play into this because ultimately, it will be a decision driven by academic performance and also the finances. But I think, you know, we should be very engaged and involved with the administrative rules that we will have to supplement this policy because that will further guide how we undergo that process.
Mr. Walker?
Yeah, so I guess to take this on, and the point Ms. Brody lifted up, I believe in too. What I see in this is, I've always felt it's equitable to look at level of student progress. Because even though it's brought Rubik of performance, and let's change the words, but I want to say out here that underperforming schools shouldn't feel disadvantaged in their area academic performance because every set of teachers, teachers get a set of students every year. And to me, success is based on that teaching, those students, how much progress they make in a year. My belief is that many community schools could show levels of student progress that would match, maybe exceed that would match, maybe exceed other schools in areas, even magnet schools. Now, but I agree with the structural problem that Ms. Brody, Board Member Brody brings up, that some schools are structurally always behind other schools in terms of the numbers game and that type of thing. But academic performance isn't a scary word. I believe for me is how we're going to measure it. And then, and so what I'm bringing up is we can't decide that here in the policy. I would advocate looking at levels of student performance. Because if a student makes progress in a year from where they started to where it ended, then that school did a great job. And regardless of how they compare to other schools, progress is progress. But that's a discussion that we have to make about how we want to look at academic performance in an equitable way in our district. So I just want to put that on the record.
Mr. Ressler?
Thank you. Thank you. In looking at the academic criteria that may include, but is not limited, limited to, school academic performance and the other things that it's saying, I think, and thinking about and listening to what Board Member Brody was talking about with regards to concentrated poverty and listening to what Board Member Walker was talking about, you know, school performance, looking at school performance. As an educator, children cannot learn if basic needs are not met. So if children are hungry, they cannot learn. If adults are hungry, they cannot perform to their, their optimal, you know, best performance ability. What I'm thinking about here is, you know, I like the fact that it says, "but is not limited to." So there, it's not just one thing. And I believe that we as board members will look at the whole picture, the whole child, the, what resources are, are not being received by the educators. Also, looking at other programs, at other models. And once again, I'm always going to talk about Montessori. I'm always going to bring that up. Looking at being innovative, looking at different ways to meet that child where they need to be met. Like this Erdkinder, for example, thinking about the concept of students who may not want to be in school or may not, you know, want to be in a specific location or a specific inside of a building. They go to a farm and they have an opportunity to use their hands. They have an opportunity to connect with nature. They have an opportunity to really, you know, get those frustrations out and become productive. You can, we can look at other opportunities with regards to trades, learning a trade, learning a skill. But I really believe that we need to be very intentional, and I believe that we will be intentional, when we, if, and perhaps when we come to a point where we may have to consolidate or close. But it also talks about, it also says, "or relocation of schools, school buildings, facilities, and/or grade levels." But the thing is, I think that a lot of folks are, are concerned about this particular policy because it's, the, the first thing they hear is school closure. It's going away. But that's not what it may always mean. So I think it's something that we need to keep in mind.
Other comments, questions?
The one thing that I will say on this policy is it does give us an opportunity to, at least give us a roadmap as we, as we move forward. And one thing I would caution us is that I don't believe that any consolidations or closings will bring us a great deal of cost savings. It really is more about making sure that our buildings are utilized and our students are in buildings that have enough of the resources that they need in one place. So that, I think, as we talk about budget and cost savings and school consolidations kind of at the same time, I think sometimes it gets a little muddied. But I definitely want to make sure that we're really making sure that our students are getting the best education that they can get in the way that we can get there. All right. With that said, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education adopt the school closing consolidation and relocation policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? All right. The ayes have it. The motion moves. Thank you, Deputy, thank you Deputy Foster. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Contracts on the consent agenda were all discussed at various committees. The first reading will be discussed again at the policy committee, providing another opportunity for feedback before coming back next month for adoption. The items are 5.2, contract approval, dynamic construction to repair and refurbish the HPHS gym floor; 5.3, contract continuation approval, Yukon athletic trainers, for three athletic trainers to support practices and games district-wide; 5.4, contract amendment approvals, special education services. The current contracts that need to be amended due to changes in students' IEP and now meet the board's threshold for approval. I want to note that this item on the agenda was revised to include an additional contract after committee for the same reasons as the others, as there is an internal communication mix-up. In addition to a brand-new-day pro-care and Aviana healthcare, creative interventions was added. Again, sorry. All of these contract amendments are due to changes in students' IEPs. 5.2, second reading and adoption, students experiencing homelessness. 5.6, second reading and adoption, graduation policy 6146. 5.7, second reading and adoption, sexual abuse and prevention and education program policy. 5.8, second reading and adoption, district safe school climate and bullying plan policy. 5.9, repeal bullying prevention and intervention policy. 5.10, first reading, challenging behavior prevention, restorative practices response policy. And 5.11, approval of the minutes from April 15th, 2025. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Nope. All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion to vote on the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? One abstention. Thank you. The ayes have it. The May 20th Board of Education meeting is adjourned. Thank you for joining us.